The flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, freedom of this world with liberty and justice for all.
Notice of this meeting has been satisfied in accordance with chapter two thirty-one of public law nineteen seventy-five by advertising in the home news Tribune, notifying the Sentinel Publishing Company and the Star Ledger, posting on the bulletin board and filing with the borough clerk. And secretary roll call please.
Kaczynski.
Here.
Mr. Esposito.
Here.
Mrs. Gottstein. Mr. Castle Grant.
Here.
Mr. Bella.
Here. Okay, we have five applications this evening. This is where how we're going to take them. Twenty-three fourteen will be first, fifteen will be second. Those are two bulk variances for residents and then live urgent care twenty-three eleven will be third. Interstate and then Verizon Wireless will be fifth. So for our first case. Akarrio and Maria Juarez, please come forward. This is one twenty-nine Pulaski Avenue of both variants. Hello. Please state your name and your address.
Alex Duras and the address is one twenty-nine Pulaski Avenue.
Okay. Would you please raise your hand, right hand? Do you solemnly swear or affirm that you will testify truthfully before this board? Please explain to the board why you want this, like these variants?
I would like to do an extension to the rear of the house so that I'm able to do a walk-in closet and an additional bathroom. For convenience, we just had a newborn and we just want to live a little bit more comfortable with the house.
Okay. So how many rooms are you adding?
So we're not adding additional, we just want to expand it so we can add a walk-in closet and a bathroom inside.
Okay. So often bedroom, I assume?
Yes.
Right, okay. And that's it. So how much of an addition is this?
The addition was was gonna be twelve by ninety.
Okay. And it's going out the rear? I just want to get all this on the record.
The rear, I think, I believe is the northwest side. Back in two thousand and four, the parents did an extension to the living room, right? And they left all the bedrooms the same, so now we want to even out the house.
Okay. What are the variances on this? Do we know?
A side yard setback, there's ten feet minimum, four point five is proposed. The rear addition encroaches a combined side yard setback, there's twenty-five foot minimum, ten foot is proposed, and exceeds the maximum building coverage for an R-ten zone, twenty percent maximum, just twenty-nine percent proposed.
Okay, but the side yard is the same as the existing side yard on the house, I believe.
Correct.
Correct, okay. Will the addition be finished? The outside of the addition be finished the same as the existing house?
Yes.
Okay, and this is a one-story addition? Okay. Does, do any board members have any questions or comments? Nope. Okay, I'll open this application to the public for comments. Anyone in the public wish to comment on this application, please come forward. Seeing no one can have a motion close up the public portion. Seconded, okay.
One question, are the houses in this area the same basically as yours? They all are? They all basically look the same, built the same?
Similar, yeah. Like, there's ranch levels, you have ones like two or three in the block, there are two levels, but for the most part, there are a single level.
Okay, one one last question, it's pretty obvious from your description, but your house will remain a single-family house?
Correct, yes.
Okay, just want to get that on the record too. Okay, can I have a motion on this application?
Motion approved.
Anthony seconded. And, okay. And roll call vote, please. Yes.
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 Okay, your application's been approved. Next month, we will more memorialize it, put it in writing, and then you can pick that up at the building office for your permit.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Our next application is Monica Callahan, one eighty-nine Lincoln Street. I believe this is in the Morgan section.
Yes.
Okay. Both of you, please state your name and your address.
Sean Callahan, one eighty-nine Lincoln Street, Servile, New Jersey.
Monica Callahan, one eighty-nine Lincoln Street.
Okay, thank you.
Will you please raise your right hands? Do you solemnly swear or affirm that you will testify truthfully before this board?
I do.
Microphone and tell us, why do you want this variant?
We've, my great-grandparents built this house in the forties, we moved in about five years ago. We just welcomed our first child to our family. And it's a small Cape Cod house, and we'd like to add an addition on the back. It'll fit in an existing deck space roughly, and to add a family room to make a little more room in the house.
Okay, a single-story addition?
Single story, yes.
It's a seventeen by twenty-one addition. The eight minimum side yard setback is going to be four, is the proposed. The twenty percent max, we're at twenty-eight is the proposed, so we're eight percent over. And the forty-five percent max, we're at fifty proposed for the impervious and we're five percent over.
So three variances.
Three variants.
Very good, you're right on. Okay, and I noticed that it looks like the deck is a little bit bigger than your addition?
No, the addition will be a little bigger than.
Oh, it's the other way around, okay, all right, okay. All right, never mind. Okay, and the outside will be finished to match the existing outside? Okay. It will remain a single-family house?
Correct.
Right, anyone have any other additional questions, comments?
If you want to be here. Pretty good job up there.
If I made a side yard setback, the side yard is gonna still be the same right through there, in other words?
Yes. Exactly, yes, it's gonna match where the rest of the house is.
And that's an existing, an existing side yard violation. Okay, all right. I'm gonna open it to the public, anybody in the public wish to comment on this application? Please come forward, anybody in the public, can I have a motion to close the public portion? And Anthony seconded, okay. Public portion is closed. Can I have a motion on this application? Okay, very good. Right, motion has been made to approve the application and seconded, roll call vote, please. Yes.
Mr. Esposito.
Yes.
Mr. Emma.
Yes.
Mrs. Gottstein. Mr. Castle Grant.
Yes.
Mr. Bella.
Okay, the application's been approved, we'll memorialize it next meeting, put it in writing, and that'll go to the building office and you can get that for your permit.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Okay, the next application is twenty-three eleven Live Urgent Care. Twenty-nine oh nine Washington Road, the Shop, right shopping center.
Good afternoon. My name is George Pressler, I'm an attorney at law of the state of New Jersey with offices in East Brunswick, I represent the applicant. Standing to my right is the CEO, Roland Marquis, who will offer some testimony with regard to this. Basically, what we're asking for is a use variance to permit a walk-in medical center providing medical services. All right, and part of the treatment that would be offered for injuries to the body, illnesses, vaccinations, laboratory testing, things of that nature. As the board, as your Mr. Chairman has already mentioned, this is for twenty-nine oh nine Washington Road in suite number two, three, brother. And at this time, if I may have the CEO sworn in.
How many, do you have, how many witnesses do you have this evening?
I'm sorry?
How many people are gonna testify this evening?
Two.
Two, okay.
Good evening, my name is Brown Marquez.
spell your name?
Brown, B-R-O-W-L-Y-N, last name Marquez.
Brown, you are the CEO of Live Urgent Care?
Yes. Marquez, M-A-R-Q-U-E-Z.
Would you? You're right. You solemnly swear or affirm that you will testify truthfully before the board?
I do.
Thank you. Roland, could you explain the services that you offer to the communities to actually have other urgent care facilities in?
Sure, so Live Urgent Care is a traditional urgent care practice consistent with the policies set forth with Urgent Care Association. We have offices in six locations throughout New Jersey and Pennsylvania.
And what are the hours of the operation?
Our hours of operation would be Monday through Friday from eight AM to eight PM, Saturday and Sunday from eight AM to four PM.
And at any given time, how many doctors will be on call and how many staff members?
At any given time, you would have one to two doctors on call, including three ancillary staff members.
All right, now.
Excuse me, when you say on call, do you mean on the premises?
Correct, yes.
Okay.
And are you gonna provide a security system for the, for the location?
We will, yes.
All right, and do you have security systems in other locations also?
We do, yes.
Now, how is the medical waste disposed of?
So Live Urgent Care partners with NJ Medical Waste, they're located in East Brunswick, New Jersey. They process all of our biohazardous waste, all of our medical waste is stored and we should approve biohazardous containers, which is then collected by NJ Medical Waste on a recurrent basis.
I have nothing further of this witness.
Okay. Are you gonna be storing any pharmaceuticals, drugs on the premises?
We will, yes.
Okay, any classified drugs that might be, you know, someone might want to get their hands on?
No, we do not store any controlled substances at our sites.
Okay. What about ambulances, do they come to your?
Occasionally ambulance services would be required to provide further care for patients. And so they'll be called upon as needed.
To to take patients away?
Correct, yes.
But what about to take them to your place?
No.
No, okay. How many patients do you usually see in a day?
Well, the patient volume certainly varies with the season, but on average, we see anywhere from about twenty to thirty-five patients per day.
Okay, and that's over, how many hours, twelve hours?
That's over a twelve-hour period.
Okay. All right, any other questions?
Where exactly is it gonna be located? I know where shop is, where would it be?
Correct, so I, if I understand correctly, it's gonna be located about two buildings adjacent to shop, right? Two suites next to shop, yeah.
After the liquor store?
Yes.
I had supplied the site plan showing the location, okay. Okay, I, I supplied larger copies than that.
Okay. Any other, any other questions?
Yeah, they'll be taking, you'll take x-rays there?
We will, yes.
We will.
What are the kind of normal things that you do? Do you do stitches, broken bones? You know, just kind of go through the normal kind of things that you do?
Sure, I'd say the top five most common visits we'll see are upper respiratory infections, treating orthopedic injuries. That's a great question, wow. Common rashes and complaints you've seen in a primary care office and also in other urgent care settings.
Broken bones.
Correct, yes.
Are there any things that you would turn away because you can't handle them?
Any emergency or life-threatening illnesses that require further care, yes. Or any services that would be outside our scope of practice.
Okay. And you see children to adults and senior citizens?
Yes.
Okay. All right, any other questions?
Your audience technically requires a loading area, is there a need for you to have a loading area for deliveries?
I believe not.
Thank you.
What kind of deliveries do you get?
Our deliveries usually would be recurring supplies and things like that.
UPS, Federal Express?
Correct.
Okay. And disposal, you already mentioned that you have a service for disposal?
Yes.
Ever open like outside of ours because of an emergency situation?
That would not be a common or historical practice of ours.
Okay. Are you gonna have any additional signs like outside, like sometimes you see a hospital sign along the road guiding people to, to a hospital, do you have anything like that?
No additional signs proposed at the moment.
Okay. Any other questions?
Just to confirm, you will have some kind of sign on the front of the building, though?
Correct.
Sweet, okay, thank you.
Okay, we'll take public questions if there are any after all your witnesses. So, I guess we're done.
Let's fake it. It's currently fake.
Which, and what's the closest one of your clinics?
It would be our Spotswood office.
Oh, okay, that's very close, okay.
Mr. Higgins?
Good evening.
Mr. Higgins, inner planner?
I do.
Want to sub forth your credentials?
I'm a licensed planner in the state of New Jersey, I've been licensed for over forty years. I have testified before this board and been accepted as a professional planner on numerous occasions. I've testified through numerous, for numerous boards throughout the state as an expert as well as superior courts in the state and it's recognized by the state Supreme Court as an expert in the field of planning.
Okay, we'll accept your credentials, you've been here before.
Your first name?
What's that?
Your first name?
James. And my license is current. Okay, basically, the existing site is a large shopping center, it's got a number of uses and a shop right, a Kessler physical therapy facility, a fitness center, restaurants, a kidney care facility, which was approved by use variance by this board, salons and a dental facility amongst other uses, fairly large shopping center that has nine hundred and seventy-two parking spaces. And the last application before this board for the Dunkin' Donuts determined that there was a need for nine hundred and forty-nine parking spaces, so there's an excess of twenty-three spaces on the site. It's in the B-two PUD zone, medical uses are not currently permitted in the zone. So a use variance is necessary. And in this case, I think there are special reasons for the granting of the variance. I think the main reason is that the general welfare is advanced due to the particular suitability of the site for the use. And I say that for a number of reasons. First of all, while the use is not inherently beneficial and John's report mentions that also, and I agree with that. But it is a use that provides a necessary public service and a significant benefit to the public as opposed to other commercial uses such as a gift shop or a convenience store or just a general business office. There's definitely a service that's provided that does benefit the public. And in fact, while it doesn't provide emergency services for critical situations, as you've just heard, it does in many instances provide services that would otherwise be necessarily provided in a hospital emergency room. And so it takes some pressure off of the local hospital emergency room, so I think there's a benefit there also. The site is in a shopping center that currently has a number of uses that are either medical or related to medical or related to public health, including the physical therapy, the kidney care center, the dental facility and a fitness center. So it's not foreign to the nature of the shopping center either, I think it fits in. I think it will also benefit other uses in the shopping center by drawing people to the shopping center that might not otherwise be there. They would then utilize this facility and then possibly utilize other of the businesses in the shopping center. So I think it helps vitality of the shopping center. The nature of the use itself, as far as the onsite activity, not what goes on inside the building, but the onsite activity is very similar to most of the uses in the site. People pull up, they park, they get out of their car, they walk into the facility, they stay in the facility, they do whatever is necessary in the facility in terms of medical treatment, and then they get, leave and get in their car and leave, so it's not, the, the nature of the activity on the site isn't foreign to what occurs on the site at present, so when I look at all those things, I think definitely the site is particularly suited for the use and that there is a benefit to the general welfare. And when you look at any detriment, there is more than enough parking on the site, the prior use of the space, as I understand it, was a dance studio that required thirteen parking spaces, your ordinance for this use would require ten parking spaces, there are two doctors on site at any time, so it would require five per doctor. The reality is, you would probably require a few more parking spaces than those ten, it might be up to fifteen, but there would still be a surplus of parking on the site. So there's no substantial detriment there. The nature of the use is not inconsistent with the uses on the site, with the operation of the site, so I don't think there's any detriment to the, the site itself or to the surrounding properties. And quite frankly, because of the nature of the use, I don't think there's a substantial detriment to your zone plan either, I don't think anybody would even notice that this is a medical facility on the site, particularly since there are several other medical-type facilities on the site at this time and it hasn't really been detrimental to your zone plan. So when I look at all that, I think there are special reasons for the granting of the variance, and I don't think there's any substantial negative impact.
Okay, any follow-up questions?
No.
No, okay. John, do you want to make any comments on the testimony?
No, as usual, I think Mr. Higgins covered what needs to be covered and this is a fairly innocuous use in the shopping center and certainly something that brings value to the community, so I have no, no issues with the testimony.
And this is a, really what, all I need is a use variance, right?
Correct.
There's no bulks, just, just a use?
Correct, nothing, nothing's being built, developed or changed on the site, it's simply a tenant that's not permitted use moving into an existing space.
Okay. Any questions from board members? No? Okay, any comments from the public on this application for the medical facility in the shopping with shop and center? Seeing no one can have a motion to close the public portion? Okay, well, those in favor? I, okay. Anything to summarize? Okay. All right. Can I have a motion on this application? So it's a use application, we need five affirmative votes, correct? And how many, we have six members this evening, or? So we have six, normally we should have seven, I just want to let you know, but you're okay with that? Okay. Can I have a motion on this application? Okay. Motion has been made and seconded to approve, roll call vote, please. Yes?
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, application's approved. Okay. Right, application number four, twenty-three oh four Interstate Outdoor Advertising, nine forty-nine Route Nine North.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, nice to see you, nice to see you're professionals. My name is David Himmelman. You recall, we were here, I guess, on April twenty-sixth and we were carried till tonight, and so I thank the board for allowing us to proceed this evening. As you know, I represent the applicant, which is Interstate Outdoor Advertising. And we are here, Mr. Chairman, on a final minor site plan and conditional use variance approval. And for the record, the property is Block four thirteen, Lot four, of course, on your map here in Servile and known for the address is nine forty-nine Highway Route Nine. In essence, the applicant has filed an application with the board seeking approval to erect a new Monopol advertising sign on the property. And you'll hear this evening from our applicant and witnesses that the board will consist of LED technology on one side face only, the side will not have a second face. The property is located in your B-three Highway Business Zone. And as you know from the professional memorandum, your billboards are permitted use with conditions in the B-three Highway Business Zone, and since the applicant cannot satisfy certain of those conditions, thus we seek a use variance or a D-three is required. The applicant also seeks bulk variances, which we will get into as well regarding other items. As you know, the board has the power to grant the D-three conditional use variance pursuant to the municipal land use law at NJSA forty fifty-five D seventy D three in particular cases and for special reasons. And as you know from prior applications, this is the positive criteria which we'll have to establish in order to sustain the ability to obtain a D-three variance. As it pertains to the positive criteria, and you'll hear from our planner, and I know your planner will guide you on this as well, is whether this, is whether the board's focus, whether the site remains appropriate for the conditional use despite the fact that we technically don't meet all of the ordinance conditions. The board does have the discretion to grant a D-three variance, but we also need to establish, of course, the negative criteria that has been satisfied, and you'll hear the basis for the negative criteria from our planner as well. We have three witnesses, Mr. Chairman, this evening. We have our engineer, Robert Porches, or Jeffrey Gerber, who's the president and chief operating officer for the applicant, and John McDonough, our professional planner, who will testify on the planning, on the variance relief sought. So if you don't have any questions of the board, we can proceed. Okay, thank you. Robert?
Okay.
Sure, Mr. Chairman, we're just gonna hand out, these are just
Just, just sort of for the record, that, what is it?
That would be the, that would be the, well, that, it's a site plan that was filed.
Okay.
Last revision date on that, Robert, was what? That's what I thought. Yeah, you, you're gonna have to speak up, because, right. Okay. Mr. Chairman, while we're handing those out, our first witness is Robert Korchak, who's our, our, and professional engineer, so Mr. Krenzel, we would, I'm gonna ask that he be qualified as an expert in civil engineering. Would you just give a brief background, your professional licenses, and I presume you've testified in numerous boards around the state, but if you would just clarify that, please, for the record?
So I have a bachelor's and master's degree in civil engineering, I have been
Just state your name for the record also.
Sorry, it's Robert Korkich, last name spelled K-O-R-K-U-C-H. I have testified before boards throughout New Jersey, both planning boards and zoning boards. I've also represented planning boards and zoning boards throughout New Jersey as well. And haven't found classified as a, as an expert on many, many applications in the state.
Okay, we accept your credentials.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We're going to give you a microphone, so. He was qualified.
I do.
Robert, if you would just, for the record, so you, you brought the site plan that was last revised, that was submitted as part of the application, but that's, that's, there's been no change to this, correct?
Correct.
Okay, so there's no reason to mark that further.
I don't believe so, but that's for you.
Fair enough. So if you would just take us through the site plan and give us an overall view of the application.
So the two sheets that were handed out to you, I'm going to display them up here to point to a couple of the features that are on here. It's relatively simple, but I'd just like to walk through both of those sheets. So the first sheet is sheet one of two, and it shows the approximately half acre site currently on this. This is on the northbound side of Route nine. And currently on the site is a, an office building with associated parking and in all simplicity, that's all that's currently there. What is being proposed at this point is to erect, as you've heard, a monopole billboard. It is shown the dark line here that's shown on the plan I'm pointing to. And the circle would be the monopole and, and the billboard itself. There'll be others here who will be testifying about great details about the design of that. I'm showing you on the site where it will be located and configured. The billboard itself, and you'll hear again details, the top of it is fifty feet off the ground. And the existing building is about twenty two feet in height. And so there is a clearance between the bottom of the billboard and the top of the building of somewhere between ten, ten to twelve feet. But the billboard itself will overhang the existing building. And it has been cited so that it is clear of any other utilities and overhead utility lines or any other obstructions. There with this proposal, it is simply the five foot diameter monopole with the billboard itself. There's no change in site circulation for vehicles. There's no pedestrian circulation changes. There's no stormwater management changes. There's no grading changes. It's just simply that direction of that.
So while you have this one, so where the monopole is sitting, I could, I could see the parking spaces in the building. Right? Where the monopole will go into the ground. What is there? Grass?
Yes.
So that's just
It's undeveloped, just grass.
Just grass, right, okay.
The second exhibit I'm showing you, which is the second sheet of the plan set that you have is simply for the purpose of identifying where the locations of other billboards are in the area. Your, your ordinance identifies a thousand foot threshold for the locations of other billboards. And so on the top of this exhibit is the existing site and directly across Route nine is there is another billboard that's a little more than a hundred and sixty feet away. And then if you look all the way down to the bottom of that sheet, there's another billboard shown that's about five hundred and thirty feet away. Again, on the northbound side, but further south on the, on the roadway. That's all I've got.
Robert, you're concluded. You want to add anything? Okay, great.
Let's just questions.
Mr. Chairman, you may have
What about the other direction?
Yep, fair enough.
I'm sorry.
What do you mean? I'm sorry.
There, there are no, there are no other billboards within a thousand.
Okay.
The other direction.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
John or Jay, can I ask a question? So it's five hundred and thirty feet from the other billboard. Is there, is there a specific amount of feet that we have to have between billboards? So it's not bang, 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 or?
Your ordinance requires a thousand feet.
A thousand, okay, I missed that. If you wrote that, John, I apologize in your report.
Yeah, that's one of the conditional use standards, size of thousand feet. There are also standards that NJDOT has that are required, separation distances as part of the permitting. I'm sure we'll hear some testimony about that as well, but the state regulates them as well.
Thousand foot distance, is that on the same side of the road or?
Doesn't matter.
Doesn't matter.
One of them is across the roadway and the other one is on the same side of the roadway within a thousand feet.
Thousand feet, okay.
Location. That's what's shown. Okay. The top of the billboard, and you'll hear more about this in detail, the top of the billboard is fifty feet off the ground. You'll be seeing some images that will describe that, the setting of it and what that look will be.
So it's going to be over the tree? Or are you going to be removing those trees?
Yeah.
I think the applicant can address that question. Okay.
Is it common to have a billboard overhang a building like that?
Again, there'll be others who can testify more specifically for that. All good questions.
Mr. Chairman, thank you. Thanks, Bob. Our next witness, Mr. Chairman, is Jeffrey Gerber, who is the Chief Operating Officer of Outdoor.
Please state your name and your title.
My name is Jeff Gerber. I'm the president of Business Development and Chief Operating Officer for Interstate Outdoor Advertising.
Mr. Chairman, my intention is Mr. Gerber is going to go through a lot of the technical aspects of the application and address, obviously, some of the questions the board had a few moments ago, but I'm not intending on introducing him as an expert. He's really a fact witness. But I do want to have, I am going to ask Mr. Gerber's just his background questions so that the board understands generally his prefer, his professional background and his relationship to the company. So, Mr. Krenzel, I just wanted to make that clarification. Okay. And we'll swear to win.
Do you have a family square firm that testify truthfully before the board?
Yes, I do.
Okay. Mr. Gerber, good evening. You indicated that your, your present title and relationship to the applicant is, is what?
Yeah, I'm the president of Business Development and I'm the Chief Operating Officer of the company. I've held that position since two thousand and one. Prior to that, I was a partner at the law firm of Bressler, Amy and Ross in Moorestown, New Jersey, where I represented numerous outdoor advertising companies in Pennsylvania, New Jersey and New York. Prior to that, out of law school, I went to the New Jersey Attorney General's Office, and I was assigned to be counsel to the New Jersey Department of Transportation and in particular the outdoor advertising section in, in the New Jersey Department of Transportation. The New Jer, the outdoor advertising section regulates all outdoor advertising signs throughout the state of New Jersey. My role was to enforce those regulations, promulgate new regulations, ensure that the department complies with the Federal Highway Beautification Act.
Very good. And you've been with the company for how long?
Over twenty years. I've been involved in the outdoor advertising industry for thirty five years.
Very good. And just in terms of the, your, the company's relationship to the site.
Yeah, let me first just give a little background about our company. Interstate Outdoor Advertising started in nineteen eighty four. It's based in Cherry Hill, New Jersey. We have offices also in Atlantic City, Jersey City and Philadelphia. We have over seventeen hundred displays in New York, New Jersey, Pennsylvania, Illinois, Indiana, Massachusetts and California.
Very good. Okay, I'm sorry about that. Anyway, oh, did anyone have any questions, Mr. Gerber, thus far? Okay, great. Getting to the, to the site itself, if you could explain a little bit about the relationship between the applicant and the current property owner, and then I also understand you, we brought some exhibits.
Yeah, it'd probably be helpful first to just kind of explain how we selected the site. I've been involved in site selection and obtaining municipal approvals for well over twenty years. And the first thing that we look at is to make sure that this, this sign's not going to, a sign's not going to impact a residential area. That a sign's not going to shine into someone's bedroom or the living room, that no one's going to see the advertising on the sign. And this location meets that requirement. I'll show you the exhibits in a minute. Second thing we look for is that it be in a commercial zone. This is in the B three business zone. We look for a, a, a major transportation corridor, which certainly Route nine is in this location with two, four lanes of traffic to an east direction, heavily traveled near the entrance to the, to the, to the Garner State Parkway. And, and lastly, can it be, can it be permissible by the New Jersey Department of Transportation? You cannot have an outdoor advertising sign in New Jersey without getting a state permit. And this meets the requirements for DOT. What are the requirements in this case? One, are you in a commercial zone? Yes. Are you spaced at least three thousand feet away from another digital sign? This is a digital sign. It will be more than three thousand feet away from the nearest digital sign. There is one to the north about thirty two hundred feet away on the same side of the road. And we will be more than three thousand feet away from that. Lastly, DOT always does a safety inspection. When they look at a sign location, is this sign going to have any negative impacts to traffic safety? And if they do, they will deny your permit. They did not do that. In this case, they approved our sign application. And by this three thousand foot spacing, meaning that three thousand feet on the same side of the road, either to the north or to the south, there cannot be another digital sign. So you have over six thousand feet over a mile effectively, where there can be another digital sign.
Fair enough. And, and you have, you, I mean, the applicant has DOT approval for this.
We have a DOT permit for that. I believe that was submitted in our package. And we also have a lease with the property owner who owns the, it's the Lithia, it's the motor company that's to the, to the, to the north. They also own this property as well. We have a lease with them. It used to be a doctor's office, and then they purchased the property.
Fair enough. Now, in terms of the I'm sorry. I was going to ask you to sort of get into the description of the signage and how the digital sign operates.
All right, yeah, if, well, if we get into the site location, let me grab my book and Marty, we need to get those exhibits. We handed out a yeah, please. We handed out a booklet to the board.
With the, with the, right.
So, and we probably should get this marked, I guess, as
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I don't believe this was submitted as part of the application. So these are photos of the packet that we, we had brought with us this evening. Was that, I don't think it was, Joe. Now, so we would get that marked, I guess, A one.
A one, okay. Are there any extras?
Hold on, why don't you just mark, mark the first page. Yeah, right there, A one, it just dated, Joe.
Okay. Okay, here's, here's the one that's marked. You can just take that one and I can work off another. So A one is an exhibit. It's in type Saraville, Mill six county, east side Route nine, seven hundred and forty four feet north of Old Cheesecake Road, Block four thirteen, Lot four. It consists of a total of, I believe, nine pages. Page one is just an overall map showing the proposed location along the east side and northbound, northbound side of Route nine, east, east of Route nine. Page two is just a blow up of that closer of the proposed location. Page three is an aerial photograph, and that's this, it's, it's this one up on top here on this easel, and it shows the, the property. And then the next shows a much more close up location of it. It shows the proposed location of the sign. And you can see that you're within a major transportation corridor. However, to the east, there is Eugene Boulevard, which is a residential neighborhood. However, a couple of things, we were before this board back in twenty seventeen. And we had proposed a two sided sign, and there was a neighbor who came at that hearing and was very concerned about the, the backside of the sign. And so we spoke with them and we came back. We prepared a site plan for a single sided sign. The property then got sold. Then we had to deal with a new property owner. And it took us, and COVID took us time to come back to the board. But even though we felt that the angle that sign wasn't going to impact the neighborhood because the homeowners were so concerned about it, we said, okay, we'll just remove it. So now all we have is a digital sign showing only to northbound traffic on Route nine, not to southbound traffic. Nobody who lives along Eugene Boulevard is going to see this sign in their property. First thing, first of all, you're going to see the front of the sign. And with respect to the back of the sign, if you notice to the east of the property, there's a very heavy vegetative layer there that consists of both evergreen, a large number of evergreen trees as well as deciduous trees. Plus, you have the building itself that provides a buffer and there's also another building to the north of the property. So this, this sign will really have no visual impact to the neighbors and who live along Eugene Boulevard in this residential section.
And Jeff, no trees are proposed to be removed?
No, there, there might be some minor, literally minor trimming of one tree, but that is it. No tree removal. And if any of, you can put this as a condition of our approval, if any of our trimming causes a death of a tree, we will replace the tree in kind.
So just to summarize that part of your testimony, so the residents who live directly
Yeah, to the east.
They will not be able to
They'll not be able to see any of the advertising on the sign. The one, one of the great things about a digital sign is that the light is very focused. It doesn't spread like, like the old time billboard that has the, the lights on the outside that go against the, the board and the light spreads out. Digital signs are very focused in their, in the light that they direct. If you've ever driven one along the highway, so you've seen them. As soon as you get to a certain angle, they go completely black. It's because the light is very focused. So this will not impact, this will not shine in anyone's home. No one's going to have an issue with that. This is something that we're very careful about when we build a sign because the last thing we want to have is have, have neighbors be upset. And you can look, search us on the internet. We've never had a complaint of any sign. I've been involved in over two hundred and fifty applications on the east coast, and I've never had a complaint from a sign that we have built. And so the, 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 the next look, next page, page five, shows the, the, the digital sign as you're heading north on, on, on Route nine. And, and the next page is just another, shows you the dimensions of the sign. You'll notice that it's a fourteen by forty eight. Why is it a fourteen by forty eight? Well, fourteen by forty eight is the standard size sign in the industry. It's not only a New Jersey standard, it's a national one. And I believe that the code allows for six hundred and seventy five square feet. Not sure why it's six seventy five in Saraville, but six seventy two is really the, the national standard, and we meet that. And we're at a height of fifty feet for two reasons, and we meet the requirements of, of, of the code at fifty feet, but there's two reasons why we're at fifty. One is, is to get proper clearance over the building. And the second is you can see this directional sign, this DOT directional sign to the right, although this picture doesn't look like a big deal. When you're in the right lane and you come up, that starts to take out that sign. And so to make sure we have proper clearance over that, we don't want to build this on any higher than we have to. It's expensive with foundation, metal, and the sign doesn't need to be any higher. We don't want the sign any harder than it needs to be to have commercially viable visibility to, to Route nine. There was a question by one of the board members about, have you ever built a sign over top of a building? Yes, we've done it many times. Not only we've done it over top of a building, we have built it through a building. We've done it in two locations, one in Bogota on Route eighty through the Prince, Queen Anne Theater, right through the middle of the Queen Anne Theater, we built a sign and on a printing company along the Plasky Skyway in Jersey City, we built one right through the, the middle of the building. So we have experience with that. And again, we've had no issues with that type of construction. On page seven just shows the zoning of the location as B three, and page eight is a blow up of that. And then page nine is, this was put in here because there was some talk by the land, the new landowner Lithia, that they may make, enlarge the parking lot in that building for their purposes of their, of their car business. And this shows that even if they make that change, that they're, they may do or may not, we're not going to affect any of their parking spaces. Our pole is going to be off of the parking lot, and they'll have enough clearance at thirty three feet to park whatever vehicles they want underneath it. So the other thing is, I guess, is the issue of a digital sign operation. I don't know if the board is familiar with how digital signs operate. The, the standard operation, and it's set by DOT regulation in most part, is eight second changes in copy. Every eight seconds, the sign changes. It has to change instantaneously, which this does. It changes in less than a second. It can have no motion. The sign will have no motion. It also has to adjust to the brightness, to, to ambient light conditions. On a bright day, the sign powers up. On a cloudy day, On a bright day, the sign powers up. On a cloudy day, like we had today, it will power down. At night, it powers down even more. The standard in this state is not to be above point three foot candles, a point three foot candles above ambient light levels measured at a distance of 250 feet. This sign will meet those requirements. We built, we got an approval from the board in 2018 for a sign on Route 35 at the Phoenix Truck location. And that sign's been in operation now since we've built that in 2019 for over four years with no complaints of the sign's operation or anything related to how it's been operating since, since 2019. And I think that's all with the digital sign operation. The other thing is, is the benefits of, of digital signs. They allow, and we make this available for all the municipalities in which we do business, is to use the digital signs for two purposes for the municipality. One is for public service messaging, which is you have, you want to have a fundraiser for your fire department. You want to have, you want to let the public know about a festival or some, some, some something of concern of the town. That's made available. We will guarantee Saraville, use of the sign, one eight second spot every other minute as a minimum. We rarely are sold out, so there's more time than that than would be available. And I'll give you some examples if we can go through, Marty, if you can put those up. These are examples of what we've done. The first one actually is, well, yeah, let's show. We need to mark, we need to mark some of these as exhibits. Let's.
You have handouts, Jeff.
Oh, do we have the handouts? Okay. Okay. So yeah, there's, there's a list. Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I guess we'll have what will be the next exhibit.
It'd be A2. Here, I'm marking, give it to A2, same date. A2.
Yep. These are public announcements.
So A, A2 is, I'm sorry, A2 is an exhibit consisting of eight pages. And it's copy, some of it is, 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 is an example. Others are actual copy. I'll go through them in detail for the board. The other aspect of, of the digital sign that's of great use to municipalities is for emergency messaging. The board, we, we allow municipalities to have the right to override all the commercial messaging. If there's a weather alert, if there's an amber alert, fire alert, and lately a smoke alert. So that, that's there. What our art department does is we develop templates for various emergencies with municipalities' name on it. All we have to do is be contacted by either the police department or the township's communication officer. And within minutes, we can change the copy. Copy on the sign can be changed very easily, either at our central station, at our office. I can actually change it with my cellphone if I want to. So it's a really great tool. Frankly, I wish municipalities took more, more advantage of it than they do. And we, we hope that, that Saraville will.
That's one of my questions. I know Joan used it, right? For Paint the Town Pink. Do we, do we, we, we approved your sign on 35 years ago. I remember that application. Do we use it? Do more people take advantage of it?
I'm, I'm, I would love for you guys to use it. And I'm going to show you some examples, some other towns who have used it to their great advantage. On, I, I encourage you guys to take advantage of this tool. And our art department's available at no cost to help you design it. If you say, look, we want to do this kind of a message, our department will design four or five examples for you. You pick it and you're off to the races. It's really, if you, if someone wants to just put someone in charge at, at the town, we, we would love to, we kind of, we do this all the time. And it, once, once, once you start doing it, it's very easy, and it can really be a very effective program for the municipality. I'll give you some examples in here. The first two are just some, you know, one's an emergency alert and amber alert. The second one is a public service. Check the date for changing your smoke alarms. The third is a, a weather alert. Again, we, this is just a design. If, if somebody in Saraville wanted to change the template, however, they, whatever they wanted to put on there, we would work with you to do that. The fourth one is a, is a road closure. Now, this one, the fifth one is Ramsey. This is from an actual copy, a sign that we have on Route 17 in Ramsey Digital Sign. Their farmer's market. They wanted to promote this farmer's market. It has done gangbusters for them. It, they, their, their traffic increased dramatically because of the use of our sign. This other one is, is Indians High School. This was during, during COVID. Up in Oakland, they wanted to, they wanted to promote their high school graduation. They weren't having graduations, so they used our sign to do that, which was a nice, nice thing to do. Here is Hazlet, has been, Hazlet has been one of our more active municipalities in using this sign. We have a double sided digital sign on Route 35 in Hazlet. This was for a, a, a festival that they wanted, the Hazlet Day. And, and the next one was for a swim club for 2023. They opened up a brand new public pool, and they wanted to get membership right away. And we put our, we put this out, and within a couple of weeks, they sold out of their pool. A lot of people had learned about it from seeing, driving by and seeing. So this is just a few examples of it, but it's a really, really effective tool. And I encourage Saraville to please take advantage of it if we, if we get approved.
So the current sign that's approved and through the board for this application, could there be a coordination between the two?
Of course. But we, what I just said was what we agreed to with the other approval. And that stands for both signs. We could coordinate. We could, there's no limit. We're guaranteeing you a minimum of one spot every other minute. But I would say a lot of times we're 65, 75% occupied. So that leaves one or two spots every minute available to the municipality if they want to take advantage of it. And we would love for you guys to do it.
So the town would work on the copy?
Town would propose what they want. Our department would actually design it for them. Tell us what you want, you like, you don't like this. Whatever you need, we'll do it, and it's all at no cost. So just the one last thing I have to say is about actually the copy content of the sign. We're very concerned about what goes on our signs, and I'm sure that you would be concerned too. We, and we, this was at the last application, we requested that there be restrictions on what could go on the sign. So there'd be no gentleman clubs or anything inappropriate on the sign. If we ask for it as a condition, there's no constitutional issue, because we're asking you to, you're not imposing it, but we know it's an important thing to do. So we're asking to do it. We did that with the sign on Route 35, and there's not been a single complaint of the copy in that sign in four years. And so that's really all I have to say unless the board has some questions.
Chairman.
So you're asking us to put conditions on what you can advertise? But so we really, I guess, need your help as to what you're proposing.
Yeah, we can refer to the prior resolution. We drafted that the last time it was acceptable to the board. And it's worked well for four years with no complaints.
Okay. And that'll, we can work with that?
Yes. Okay. That goes to the, the content to make sure it's not offensive.
Yes, I understand.
And we don't, and we don't want.
We just want to get it right in the resolution.
A hundred percent.
I, I have one question, more or less along those lines. And again, to get it on the record, hacking and security, how do you handle that?
We, okay, getting into the IT stuff, but we have like triple security on that. We've never had a sign hacked. We have, I mean, even for me to get, I, I travel, because we have signs in other states. And I travel for business. For me to use my remote, my laptop to get into my system, I have, we have a secondary like password system that changes every single day to make sure that no one can hack into our system. So we're super careful about that. And by the way, if all of a sudden someone hit hacking, we could immediately cut the power to that sign and turn off what we had to. We've never had that problem in over 10 years of operating digital signs.
You have a wireless capability?
Correct. It's on a modem. That is correct.
Um, in this booklet, page six and five, I gotta point this out to the board and you. You are grossly misrepresenting this graphic. So this sign is way closer to the road, to the highway than what you're showing on your plans here. You're actually, you have the pole on the inside of the telephone poles.
It, I, I, I understand what you're saying, and this is, this is the problem of trying to put this on a two dimensional pic, uh, picture. We, we had the same issue on Route 35. It's just, it's, we're not trying to mislead the board anyway. It's very difficult to properly place this on there in a two dimensional situation. We are going to follow exactly what's on our site plan in terms of distances. This is, this, I can tell you that the height is to scale, because how we got that height is we actually had somebody with a pole with a flag on it, up, go up to the top of that, and then we, we superimposed the, the sign face on there. There is distortion, I, I grant you, but it's not intentional. So it's very difficult to get these accurate on a two dimensional exhibit.
I think this is also, Jeff, just to give you a visual, also tree line and to show its relationship to the highway.
Right. And just to kind of give you a, it's very difficult to make it super accurate, but I can tell you that what we have on our.
Close.
It, it, it looks, it.
This would actually be behind the tree. I'm looking at the Google map. And so where your, where the sign is, is literally going to be behind that first tree on the property.
And, and we, all we have to do is do some minor trimming. We don't have to, and we'll agree that as a condition. I know, I know it's, I know it's a bit confusing. I agree with you. But it's really the best we can do in these types of situations. I'm not challenging, you know.
I mean, you're just coming before the board with something that's a little bit deceiving.
Well, it's not intentional.
Somebody may not have picked it up, and it, it looks fine from here, but it's.
Yeah, it's not intentional, sir. It's just, it's the difficulty of trying to put this 3D situation in a two dimensional situation. We will agree that we will not remove any trees on the property. That we will only do some trimming, and if anything happens to any of those trees, we'll replace them. But I don't think that's going to happen, because it's minor trimming on one tree.
Mr. Chairman, Jeff, for the board, you have a site plan that the engineer presented that shows specific setback distances from property line. So that's what they're going to have to abide by. So it may not be represented properly on the graphic, but the site plan shows what those setbacks are going to be. Let me answer your question. When it came, now I'm trying to remember. When they came here last time for the, for the sign on 35 at that dealership, didn't they propose they were going to put it in one spot? And then they had, have it, they moved it? And they sort of, we, so we agreed to it in one area, and then they just kind of changed it on their own without notifying.
Actually, I'll tell you, that year, the sign itself, the actual sign face is exactly where it was supposed to be per the site plan approved. What happened was our contractor moved the pole back a little bit, but there was no change. There was, with that sign, those two sign faces that were up in the air, where they were in respect to orientation to Route 35, where exactly as said on the site plan, just the pole that was in the middle was moved back a bit.
Yeah, I think the pole was supposed to be towards the back of the property line, and then it ended up in the front of the property.
It might have been the opposite, sir. I don't remember that. I remember.
No, because it's in the front of the property.
It was removed. It was moved like about five or eight feet, the pole. But it.
No, it was more than that. Your sign's 48 feet wide.
No, the pole, the pole sits like, the, the pole can be at the very front of the sign. It can be in the middle, it can be back. It, it was, it was, I believe it was moved back about 10 feet. It was something like that. But the actual location of the sign, the sign faces were, the setbacks, everything that we had gotten variance for did not change. It was just the pole in the middle of the sign.
But you ultimately got a building permit.
Right. And we, we did, we, we went back and we discussed it with the, with the zoning officer, with, with the billing department, and we worked it out. But that was just, that was not, the actual sign faces and where they were in relation to the road did not change one inch.
I just want to make sure this gets approved, that you're not going to be moving stuff around like you did on the other application.
Hey, that happened, that's probably the only time it's ever happened since I've been involved with the company. I guarantee it will not happen here. Make it a condition that that pole has to be exactly shown on the site plan, or you'll pull our permit or approval. I have, that's not going to happen.
Plus, you've got your zoning officer, Mr. Shansky, the construction department. They're going to go out and expect to make sure, as you've indicated, that it reports with the site plan.
The other one didn't. And it was already up when it was reported.
I remember that, because you had called me. I think it was because the pole was adjusted.
It was just a, it was, it was something happened in the field. It was a mistake. It should not have happened, but it didn't change the actual nature of the approval. But that's not going to even happen here. I make it a condition of our approval that you can, can't, you can make us forced to take the sign down if we do that. You can make that a condition of our approval. It will not happen.
Okay. Any other board members have any questions?
Yes, sir.
Fall and winter, when there's less vegetation, you don't consider the lights as a.
Well, the light itself will impact if there were no trees. If there was no trees at all along that area, zero, the, the advertising of the sign would not impact the residential area. What I was just talking about simply was the back of the structure, which I believe will provide, I believe this vegetation area, because it contains a lot of evergreens as well as deciduous, will provide a substantial buffer. Plus, you have the built, there's two buildings that kind of separate that pole to that, to those homes that the backs face Route 9, but they face the front of the miles here on Eugene Boulevard.
The back of the sign is not illuminated.
Not at all. No, sir.
Did you go down Eugene and assess that?
I did.
And how did you assess it?
I, I, we had a flag up. And I, you couldn't, you really couldn't, you couldn't see anything. We had a flag up at 50 feet when we were, we were doing these renderings. It was a while ago, but you could not see anything.
Where were you standing when you were looking?
I was, I got on my car. I didn't go on the people's property. I was, I was standing along Eugene. I walked up and down Eugene on, I guess it would be the west side of Eugene, without going on people's property.
The reason I'm asking is because if you're standing on the street, you're a lot lower than the houses. The houses are all on, I guess, these little hills.
Yeah, a lot of the houses.
So they're elevated, they're elevated a lot more than on the street. So you may not see it, but if they're in their bedroom or they're on their porch or their backyard.
I mean, some of these homes, first, you have, it's funny, but right where the back of the sign, where the back of the sign, if you look back on page four of the, of the aerial photograph, if you look on the back of page four, you have, if you start to look to the north, which is where you would see the back of this sign, you have the, there's a building to the north that provides, provides buffer. You have this pretty thick vegetative area to the east. And then you have this one house, but there's two houses that are further. Both have garages behind them as well that provide buffer. But again, we're talking about the back of a sign that is not illuminated, that is not, is not going to have any impact in terms of, no one's going, it's not going to shine anyone's room. And I don't think they're, they're going to see anything of the back of the sign.
Any other board members have any questions? Any professionals? Anything? Okay, next witness, please.
Okay, thank you.
I think I'm reading to go through this memo, but we're not, we're not going to do that yet. Mr. Chairman, our next, our next witness is our professional planner, John McDonough, who will testify on the justification for the devariance sought. John?
Hi there, everyone.
Mr. McDonough, if you would just state your name and your company, and also brief CTE of your background, qualifications, and license.
Sure. Hi there again, everyone. My name is John McDonough. And that's spelled M-C capital D-O-N-O-U-G-H, and I am the project planner. My license is in professional planning here in the state of New Jersey. It's current. It's in good standing. I'm also licensed on the national level, AICP. Current and in good standing, I testify in that capacity in courts and in front of boards. And I've been here in front of this board many times.
Okay, we'll accept his credentials.
We have that this morning.
Raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear firm that you will testify truthfully before the board?
Yes, I do.
Can you just tell your last name again?
Sure. Again, it's M-C capital D-O-N-O-U-G-H.
Thank you, Mr. McDonough. If you would start out by giving us sort of a summary.
Thank you, Mr. McDonough. If you would start out by giving us sort of a summary of the applications, reviewing the zoning and the justifications for the relief, obviously identifying positive and negative criteria, but before you do that, I understand you did provide a handout, correct?
I did. We're going to let the physical characteristic of the property and the surrounding land use context speak for itself as to how this is a good fit here. This is a land use that does serve a public purpose, and we always look for a good spot to locate it where the impacts are minimal and the.
Did we, did we mark that? That has not been submitted as part of the application, correct?
I don't know.
I don't believe it. We'll mark that A3.
So A3 for the record is going to be a. It's going to be a six sheet handout. File size 11 by 17. And again, it's comprised of six pages and we're going to start with the first sheet of A3, which is a aerial view of the subject property. We've outlined it in yellow. We put a little star where the proposed sign is going to go. It gives you the approximate location. Again, the important thing here, it's a developed. It is a developed piece of property. We're looking at a single tax lot. The geometry, rectangular shape, it's about a half an acre, 20,129 square feet. You've got an office on one side, you've got the parking on the other side, so there's sort of this side by side configuration. In terms of the surrounding area, the dominant land use here, of course, is the highway. Route 9 corridor is characterized as a commercial highway that is lined by highway commercial uses, including, as you can see here, and as you know, you've got gas stations, you've got offices, you've got retail. The surroundings do also include buffered residential, which is buffered by both horizontal vegetation and also topography as well, with Eugene Boulevard being sunk or submerged relative to Route 9 and where the sign is going to go. Important, we're always going to consider those homes down there on Eugene Boulevard, but the orientation of this sign is not going to point towards them. Even if the sign were visible and this was a desert, if you will, you would not be looking at the panel itself. You would not be able to read this sign. So that's important as well. To the extent that visibility alone is not a basis for denial of any land use, it's always down to the visual impact. Not going to be able to look at the readable message from this particular vantage point. You may capture, capture a glimpse of the sign. I don't think you will, but even if you could, again, you're not going to be able to read the message. And I think this particular photograph helps show that. Again, gas station buffer, 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 all along the back of Eugene Boulevard. As you've heard here, the proposal before the board is to erect a billboard. We had started a few years ago with a double face billboard. We've eliminated one of those faces so that now you're only going to be able to see. What I call right read is you're driving northbound. It's going to be there on your, on your right hand side. It's your typical billboard, similar to what you see along the corridor now, 672 square feet, 14 feet high by 48 feet across. It's going to be set at a grade of 50 feet above grade level. This is the new state of the art technology where we have the digital multi-message display. It has an eight second dwell and then instantaneously turns to the, the next image. So it's going to appear as any static billboard would appear. It is not like a, I'll say a PowerPoint presentation where the images slide or explode or fade. It's a still image that in a blink of an eye changes. There's no change to the rest of the site grounds. This is going to be an integration into the site that has no impact on the site as it presently exists and on the future developability of the site as well, as you saw through Mr. Gerber's exhibits. There's no tree clearing that's required here. There's no interference with site operations. Maybe some tree trimming, but no tree clearing here. Importantly, we're in the B3 zone, the highway business zone. This is a use that is permitted in this zone with some conditions. I think the board well knows that would qualify as a D3 variance, not a D1 variance. It's not a wholly prohibited use. It's a use that's allowed with conditions or restrictions. The applicant is looking for some relief relative to some of those conditions. We're going to look at the legislative intent behind those conditions and see in my view how none of them are violated here. They're there to protect and safeguard the public interest, and you'll see based on the way this plan has been carefully thought out, that none of those purposes behind these conditional use standards are being violated. I'd like to flip you to the second sheet, which I really think is the home run shot, if you will, here that tells the story. We went out there back in April. We floated a drone to give a sense of context from the air. Again, I stuck a little star there where this billboard is going to be located, and you can see that surrounding land use context along the Route 9 corridor. This is going to be a view of what you would see looking to the south. Importantly, you see two other billboards in this vantage point. If you look a little bit to the north, I'm sorry, a little bit further in the background to the south, on the same side of the road is another billboard, which is going to be, or is 530 feet away from where this proposed billboard is going to go. Your ordinance says 1,000 feet separation is needed, and one of the board members used a great qualifier as to the planning intent behind that. It's to avoid the pop, pop, pop effect, if you will, and one sign after another. Importantly, visualize yourself driving northbound here and look at that sign that's 530 feet away. You're not going to see it. It's behind trees and it's facing southbound traffic. This is only readable to northbound traffic. So a northbound driver is not going to see that sign within 530 feet at all and not know it's there. The next sign that would be readable as you're going on a southbound approach is more than 1,000 feet away. So I think the planning intent is clearly met. Likewise, on the opposite, I'm sorry, I said southbound, but it's northbound. We're looking at the northbound read is more than 1,000 feet away, both to the south and to the north as well. So there's no pop, pop effect here of one sign after another. The planning intent of your ordinance of 1,000 feet is met. We're also looking for relief for signs that are only 160 feet away. 160 feet, you require 1,000 feet. That sign you could see right on the other side of the highway. That's the retrofit fitness sign that's up against the building. That is an off premises sign because that's not a retrofit fitness over there. That being said, again, if you're driving northbound, you never see that sign at all. It's hidden by a building and it's facing southbound traffic, not northbound traffic. So the key point I'm trying to make is that as you're driving northbound, the nearest signs are going to be 1,000 feet away from this location. So I think our applicant has done an excellent job of centralizing this billboard where we'll be equidistant, I'll say, or adequately separated from other billboards on the northbound drive. Those are going to be the main variances, that conditions that the applicant is seeking for relief for here. There are others as well and we'll go through them. But those are the primary ones in terms of avoiding visual clutter. We do have relief with respect to distance to residential. You require 300 feet separation to the residential properties, the nearest residential properties on Eugene, it's 109 feet away. But again, those properties are downhill and they're separated by excellent vegetation, as you can see. Again, what I'm calling a home run shot here in frame number two. Frame number three is also sort of a home run shot because now it shows you northbound approach. And you can see that there are no billboards, no readable billboards within eye shot as you're driving northbound. And that, I think, is an important planning point. You can also see if you look to the right, those homes down on Eugene, there is heavy robust vegetation, both evergreen and deciduous. Even though those leaves may drop on some of those trees in the winter, the trees themselves don't drop. So you do have, if anything, a filter view, but it is again downhill and remote. And I believe not going to be substantially, if visible at all, from those homes down below. And again, clearly you're not going to be able to read the sign from that vantage point. Page number four just shows the physical characteristic of the property from the ground. Frame number one is a view of the office that's there now. That stone area that you see in the foreground is where the post for the sign, the monopole would be placed. And then like a flag, the actual readable panel is going to hover over the building itself. Again, not something atypical in terms of what we see from a planning standpoint, in terms of the orientation and positioning of these signs. Frame number two is a view of the onsite parking lot to the right from this vantage point. So it's a pad right of the prior view. You get a sense again of the parking lot that's there and no interference with site circulation, no interference with site parking. This location is ideally situated where it is out of the way from everything else that's taking place on the site. There is relief related to setback from a structure technically, because this sign is going to hover over the building. The actual face will be zero feet, where 30 feet is the minimum required. But again, we're looking at the separation of the base itself, which is going to be nicely separated from the building and not interfere with the building. The sign panel itself is going to hover overhead and not have any impact associated with the building, notwithstanding that relief that's being sawed. There is relief related to the front property line. 21 feet is the proposal, 30 feet is the minimum required. We think the applicant has struck that effective balance and also hit the bullseye in terms of where it maintains adequate separation from that building with the base and providing adequate readability along the highway for the sign to serve its purpose. Without being out there, I'll say biting at you as you're driving by along the road, structure is going to be overhead. And I think the planning goal for adequate light air and open space, which is the purpose of setback control, is going to be met. So that are the, those are the five conditional use standards that are being violated. And again, the applicant is asking for relief from, and then there's lock frontage. That is an existing condition that would, that is not being worsened. 110 feet is what exists. 200 feet is what is required for this land use. Again, that is to avoid overcrowding, but based on the visual level that you can see here, clearly this is not going to overcrow this particular piece of property. Frames three and four on sheet number nine, just give you a sense of the target market or the target audience for this particular sign. We're looking at a narrow cone of vision that is focused on the motoring public, not the surrounding neighborhoods or the like. And if you do look at this southbound view, you can see that there are no homes within eye shot. This is pointing towards commercial uses and not going to interfere with the quality of any residential neighborhood. That goes back to Mr. Gerber's comment that this end user seeks locations that don't impact residential uses. I think our applicant has done a good job of citing a good location here. Flipping over to sheet number five, just various views of the subject property, particularly highlighting the mature and robust buffer that's there now and consists of a combination of both evergreen plantings that'll stay in foliage around and also nice lush deciduous trees as well that will provide six years, six months of full screening and six months of filter screening as well. I won't even go into sheet number six because it's redundant to what Mr. Gerber has already provided you that the new innovation and technology of this particular land use provide the benefit of real time messaging. Alerts of all sorts, current events that are happening in your community. That is the benefit of this particular land use as well. I've had board members tell me that everything that goes on a sign, you can also find on your phone. That may be true, but of course we're not supposed to be looking at our phones when we're driving. And one of the purposes of this land use is to inform, inform you of things that you may not be looking up on your phone per se. But you're driving by and you may get a notice of a restaurant nearby or an event nearby that may not otherwise be aware of. So the essence of the land use is to inform. I say this all the time, that the beneficiaries of this land use are people. These are words, these are messages. It's a form of communication. There's, there's a person or people behind every message out there trying to reach another person. So clearly it's a land use that serves a purpose as a form of communication and a way that people communicate with each other. It benefits the doctor or the dentist on one end of the town, so he can communicate with the public on the other end of town. Small businesses like that are beneficiaries of this, as well as the larger businesses as well. So in terms of the justifications for the relief, I've given you the practical reasons. We'll turn now towards the technical reasons. You heard through council's introduction, the positive criteria and then the negative criteria. In terms of the positive criteria, as I said, the general welfare is served because the site is particularly suited for the use by virtue of its context on a commercial highway where it can adequately hit its target market, which is the motoring public. This is a multi-lane state highway, Route number nine. It is the most intense of all the land uses in the area and dominates the area. And we can't turn a blind eye to the fact that the highway is there. The applicant did not put the highway there. This land use naturally follows the highways and that's exactly what's happening. Also, the site is particularly suitable by virtue of its condition. It's a very easy retrofit physically fitting on a space that's otherwise unusable or unnecessary. And even if it were to be developed, the applicant has shown you that it can be accommodated here without any wholesale clearing or earthwork being required. And then perhaps most importantly, in terms of site suitability, we have NJ DOT, who are the stewards of highway safety, finding that this site meets its criteria under NJ AC 16:41. Point C, that this is a quote unquote permitted location under the regulations and has issued a permit in that regard. Those regulations are chock full of safety concerns and the applicant certainly has met that by virtue of being issued the permit. The general welfare is also served with the following public benefits. Use, as I said, is an instrument of business. It's used by the companies that we work for, that we work with, and that we invest in. Use is also an instrument of community institutions. It benefits hospitals. We see colleges advertising up there as well, providing informative messages. And most importantly, perhaps from a legal standpoint, the use is an instrument of commercial free speech. We have certain First Amendment rights here. And we look to the national level or the federal level and the metro media case, which made that point. The general welfare is also served with the benefit of real time messaging, as I just said, the announcement of local events and services, real time updates of sports scores, other notices without having to look at the phone while you're driving. It's an instrument of police and emergency services, all of those alerts that you saw Mr. Gerber talk about. This takes you back to the purposes of the land use law at NJ SA 40:55 D dash two, especially purpose A, the promotion of the general welfare, for all of those reasons that I stated above. This is going to advance state policy which recognizes this land use as necessary and essential. We do have the Anfuso versus Silly case, which actually talks about advancement of state policy being a reason for a grant of a use variance or a special reason. We also see the advancement of purpose G, the promotion of a variety of commercial uses in appropriate locations. You can't turn the blind eye again to the fact that there is a highway here. And then of course, purpose M, the project is going to promote and advance the planning goal for efficient use of land. This is an infill location, not an expansion of the site per se. Project is also going to advance the goals and purposes of the Sayerville master plan. The project is going to promote economic development and that is an important element of the 2013 master plan. The project is going to promote a stable, readable base with a viable commercial use. And all of that put together, I think there are the blanket justifications that would go towards all of the conditional use relief that our applicant is seeking here. In terms of the negative criteria, the two prongs of the negative criteria, based on all of the testimony, relief can be granted without substantial detriment to the public visually, functionally, physically. This is an innocuous land use. Functionally, this is not going to generate any traffic. It is not going to generate any noise. It is a very narrow cone of vision that's focused on a specific target and not a broad cone of vision that focuses very wide. Visually, this use is going to be unperceivable from all vantage points except for the highway. And of course, we know from a safety standpoint, there's no correlation between this land use and higher rates of accidents or incidents of driver distraction or the like, and that's well founded as well. Relief can be granted without any substantial impairment to the intent purpose of the zone plan. As we said, this is a man use that is recognized as important to stimulate economic development. Our state policies recognize that your own master plan certainly has economic development as one of the core tenants, and that's going to be advanced here as well. The project does. The project does promote a strong commercial and readable base. It not only supports itself as a, as a readable, but also the businesses that would benefit from it. The project does promote neighborhood preservation with excellent buffering and orientation. And again, that is something that we think the applicant has done a good job of. Comes to the individual justifications, just to recap before I close. The lot frontage, one-ten versus the two-hundred, the site adequately accommodates the sign in a location that does not interfere with the rest of the site or the area. The distance to the other billboards, we've given you the visual evidence and the reasons that this is not going to be visible to the motoring public going in the same direction. The residential, you've got the drop off and you've got the the trees in between. The setback from the property line only relates to the overhead portion. And then finally, the setback from the structure is only because we have this overhang of the building per se with the flag portion. So in conclusion, based on the visual evidence, based on testimony, based on the predicate of testimony before me, both engineering and operation wise. Planning standard for relief is met here, the use will provide multiple public benefits and be a nice fit with the surrounding landscape. Project is consistent with sound planning principles for orderly growth and development. The legal standard is met under both Coventry and TSI on the positive and the negative side. And as council said, the core question is whether the site remains appropriate for the use, notwithstanding the deviation. Evidence and testimony answer the above question in the affirmative. None of the deviations will cause substantial detriment to the area. And then closing all of that, the statutory criteria for relief are met here and.
Thank you, Mr. McDonough, you've done an excellent job with your planning testimony. Mr. Chairman, your board members or editor professionals have any questions?
John, any, any comments?
No, no questions. I think Mr. McDonough laid out the the issues at hand really were. I I agree with his sentiment that we're considering whether or not the site can accommodate this billboard and its operation. Despite the deviations that were outlined, you heard what those were.
Addressed all your points in your report?
He did, yeah. And I think the, you know, the offset to the residential is the most significant issue here. But the fact that we have the digital side of the board facing away from those significantly mitigates the impact. And we heard about the prior application that would have been a much different story, I think. So the applicant's done some homework and hopefully made a better project.
Thank you, John. Any board members have any comments on the planner?
You're, you're, you're talking about that. So once they have the structure up, since they're only doing one side, what would prevent them from coming back five years from now and saying, we want to put a backside on it?
Would prevent them? Maybe they have some testimony about that. I'm not, I'm not sure if there's a permitting issue, if they would have to come before the board again and see.
Really nothing.
One of the things we wanted to talk about are potential conditions and that would be one of them. So the applicant would agree that we would, we would maintain the one-sided only. And the applicant would agree to that indefinitely as a condition should the project be approved, the application be approved. So to answer your question, technically, you can't prevent an applicant from coming back for relief, but we would agree voluntarily instead of condition that we would not.
Yeah, we would say that the condition of approval is that we are barred from coming back for the, for the other side. So there's no question about it. I'm sorry.
The, the other point, I think.
Use the microphone, please.
I'm sorry, I think that Mr. McDonough was making, and I think your planner made is, this really comes back to the impact to the residential community behind, correct, off Route nine. And I think you were here, you were back in two thousand seventeen, was it? Yes. So the applicant decided to obviously withdraw that application at that point. And we did meet with the residents that were there that night and we, as you indicate, as Mr. Gerber indicated. There's been a lot of effort made to try and address those concerns because I think as Mr. Gerber's point, we want to, the applicant wants to be a partner with Sayerville. We're not looking to hurt the community, the residents who live there. We're looking to have a relationship with the borough, particularly on the, on the public purpose part of this, which is where you're having hopefully announcements that could be utilized. So if I were a board member, sitting in your shoes, I would be, have the same concerns. But I think the applicant is trying to reach out and make sure that those concerns are alleviated. And one of them would be A, to have a condition that would bar that relief from changing the, from a two-face, you know, it's a two-face sign. And secondly, also the content of the advertising that could go on the, on the, on the billboard, which Mr. Gerber alluded to was in our prior. And I think you recall in our prior resolution of approval back in seventeen. And also that obviously no building permits could be issued for construction unless the site plan, the, the actual construction conforms to the site plan. So I'm hoping that those three or four conditions, should you be looking at this favorably, would address your concerns.
It does. The other, the other issue is, I guess the board has to really look at is, you know, how many billboards are we going to put in Serville?
Well.
I mean, it's, it's just, it's a lot of, you know, eye clutter, it's a distraction.
I was gonna have Mr. Gerber address that.
Yeah, because of the DOT regulations, there can be no other billboard on that side of Route nine for three thousand feet to the north. And then after, there is another digital sign, then you're outside of Sayerville. If, I'm sorry, to the south.
South.
To the north, you go three thousand feet, you're in a residential area on both sides of nine. So there cannot be a state permit issued. So there will, there can be no other signs along that side of Route nine in Sayerville.
May I ask a follow up on that?
Excuse me?
You're referring specifically to digital signs, right?
Yeah.
The regulations are different, as I understand, for not static.
Static, but how our industry is going, really, everyone is building digital signs and not really building static anymore so effectively. What you're talking about in the future are digital signs.
It's still a sign. It's still an additional sign on Route nine.
But I think, I think Mr. Gerber's point is through the state regulatory process. A, you're limited, B, you, you've given careful consideration to the site for all those reasons, correct?
Correct. But yes, you are correct also, sir, that it is one more sign. That is correct. And I also want to correct my testimony before about Route thirty-five. You're also correct that it was moved, it was actually the original proposal for that sign and I, I misremember it and I was. Looked back and looked at the, at the site plan, the original proposal was the pole was to be at the back of the sign. And when it was built, it was built at the front of the sign. We call it, when it's, when it's at the front of the sign, it's called a flag. When it's at the back of a sign, it's called a reverse flag. And when the structure was ordered, there was a mistake, it wasn't designated as reverse flag, it was designated as a flag, which is typical. In terms of ordering, and that was the mistake, that's why it happened. And we immediately went into town and we did get ultimately sign off on it. But you were correct, I, I thought it was, it was just a small, it wasn't, it was, it was a complete opposite because of a, of an ordering mistake. And it was installed, the installers took it and installed it and that's what happened.
Any other questions, board members? Any other questions? No. John, you're okay? Jay, you're okay? Right? Any other witnesses?
That concludes our way to the end. I just wanted to just clarify a couple. I know we've had Mr. Cornell and I think Mr. Bauer, you issued two memorandums. So have we addressed all of your comments in your memos? I just want to make sure we didn't miss anything. I, while to address, we can have either our planner, engineer, or Mr. Gerber address them. I think we did, but I just wanted to double check before we move forward.
Chairman, I think our report's been addressed. John said his points were covered.
The only, the only item that I had, just to clarify, no landscaping is proposed as part of this application. And we had testimony about the tree trimming and a commitment that if that tree trimming harms the tree and it dies, that there'll be a replacement tree.
Correct.
Okay.
Correct.
Does that ordinance require two trees for a tree to come?
It'll, it'll depend on the, the caliper of the tree, the size of the tree. And that would be evaluated and the replace, however many replacement trees are required would be required.
Yeah, and any ordinance requirements on tree replacement, although there won't be here, but or replenishment or obviously will comply.
I have a couple of what I thought of. This goes to putting those restrictions on, on what can be on the sign. Is there, is there like restrictions right now, like no smoking, no liquor, that kind of thing, just in general restrictions?
Their, their current restriction is there's no, no tobacco products are prohibited and of course, wouldn't be on the sign. Liquor typically or beer is restricted if it's near a school that, or cemetery. But that's not a law, that's an industry standard.
About gambling?
And, and gambling casinos, there are no restrictions. I'm trying to think of other gentlemen clubs, there are no restrictions. But again, we, we, we propose language and it had primarily to do with gentleman clubs and inappropriate copy that could be deemed offensive by the public. And that language was worked out, I believe, with, with the city's attorney at the time of the other approval. And we would certainly agree to that language that was in a prior resolution, we can pull that up, but we have that. And I assume it'd be still be acceptable, but if you need to make some modifications, we would certainly work with the town attorney to do so.
You can find that. You had, okay. And the back of the sign is, what's the color of it? Is it, is it an innocuous color?
It's, 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 it's a, it's a dark color, like a black color.
Okay, it's, it's dull, it's not glossy, it's not reflective?
Not at all, not at all.
Okay, and is that need to be maintained?
It's painted.
Okay, so.
It's metal and it's kept, it's painted.
Okay, all right. So you're gonna keep that so it doesn't reflect or doesn't cause any problems?
Yes, and that, that can be a condition of our approval too.
Because that's what they'll see.
Yeah, I, I, well, I think, I think they're gonna see very little of the back of that sign, but it will not be reflective, it will not be annoying. It will be, it will be a dull, dark color that will be properly maintained.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, may I ask one, you, you brought up an interesting question about the, the content. Triggered something. Are there any industry restrictions, state laws or other regulations that restrict advertisements for cannabis operations with the digital billboards?
Um, there is, the law is very, it's really confusing. It depends upon the age of the person who can see the advertising on it. If the board is concerned, cannabis wasn't an issue back in two thousand seventeen. However, if the board is concerned about there being no canvas, we will request as a, our condition of approval that there be no canvas advertising. If that's an issue for the board, that's fine with us.
These two locations in Sayerville itself, right? So why are we restricting them for that?
It's, I, I'm just, if, if something that concerns you as the board, I want to, I want to be compliant and I want to address the community concerns. If you guys are okay with it, then we're fine with it. I just don't want to do anything that's gonna cause an issue. I want it to be a, I think, I think as Mr. Hillman said, we want to have a nice partnership with the town and be a good business neighbor. And we want to work with you and if that's a concern, we would not do it. If, if you're okay with it, then we would make it available. We don't have a lot of that, it's not a lot, a big part of our advertising portfolio. But if it's an issue, okay, if it's not, okay too, I kind of leave it up to you.
From a legal standpoint, we, I mean, listen, they're business, they pay taxes on our stuff, right? We really, I mean, would we want to restrict them, A, and can we?
Well, if I could just interject before Mr. Cr, I mean, I think Mr. Gerber can, can confirm this, but it's a First Amendment issue. So if the applicant requests as a condition to restrict the type of advertising, I think that's fine. The question is whether if the board mandates that, that's where you sort of run. But that, and I think what Mr. Gerber is saying is, we want to be, the applicant wants to be accommodated. So if the board has particular sentiments about restricting a type of advertising, like gentleman's club, et cetera. I think the applicant's fine with that, we just would want to hear from the board as to if there's any of those concerns that you might have. Am I right, Jeff?
Yeah.
They, they are giving us permission to put a restriction on. But as you said, it's. If you are allowing it in the town, why would you want to do it?
Right, right. I don't know how the board feels, but.
Well, same thing with cigarettes and smoking, that's not allowed.
For the record, I, I, I do not have any issue with it. I was genuinely curious if there was any state regulations governing it. Because there are some signage standards when they apply to the signs on cannabis businesses themselves, so I was curious.
Restrictions on vaping or?
Well, it's, it's a tobacco product, so we wouldn't do it. This, I just want to say one more thing and maybe to, to give the board a little ease. We can put all these restrictions in and we may miss something. We, we put up a bunch of signs in Hamilton Township, New Jersey on two ninety-five and one ninety-five. And we had an ad for Virgin Atlantic Airlines. And the mayor was offended with somehow the play on Virgin Atlantic and called us. And we simply took the copy down and moved it elsewhere. It was something that they, they didn't want, because they were upset by it, we didn't have to do it, we had no legal obligation to it. We don't, we really want to work with you, we don't want to be combative, we want to work with you. And if someone has an issue, we'll, we'll make accommodations to address them, whether it's required in our resolution or not, that's how we do business.
Also like a risque photos or suggestive photos or anything like that?
That was kind of the language that was in the other resolution, absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Before we sort of summarize.
Public first, I think.
Yeah, right. We, I know you're gonna go open to the public, so I'm assuming after that occurs that I wanted to have a discussion with the board, but I'm assuming you're gonna open up for the public.
All right, there's no further questions from the board members. Open to the public, anyone in the public wish to comment on this application on the sign on Route nine? Seeing no one come forward, can I have a motion to close the public portion? Second? Anthony seconds, okay, the public portion's closed on this application?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think one of the things the applicant obviously would like to ensure itself that we can move forward, we, the applicant is gonna obtain an approval. But the, the issue here, this is sort of an unusual application and the issues that are before us about content and other things. So one of the things I was gonna ask is technically the applicant needs five affirmative votes. I was gonna ask if you could poll the members to get a sense of where they're thinking of this application. And if there are issues that we still need to vet on both sides, so we could address them before the board actually moves on this application. I was gonna ask your indulgence if you would be willing to do that.
I'm not gonna poll them as to how they feel.
No, no, I know that.
But I'm gonna, I'm gonna, I'm gonna say, does any of the, do any of the board members have any concerns that need to be addressed?
Correct.
Any concerns that need to be addressed?
Concerns, but I don't know how they would be addressed.
Well, you can ask the question.
Well, I just think that it's just one additional sign that we don't need.
Okay, well, that's.
On the highway.
Okay. You have that concern, anyone else have that concern? Okay, well, that's.
Okay, fair enough.
Did mention you need five votes, we only have six members here tonight.
I understand.
I don't know if the other member will be able to make it, so.
Well, I think we're prepared to go forward with our, with our vote this evening, Mr. Chairman.
Okay.
Okay. The only thing I would like to say is obviously there are items that we would be willing to have conditions. I think the applicant did an excellent job making its presentation. This site was selected with careful deliberation and we did, I think, obviously, the major differential is from the prior two thousand seventeen. Application is the removal of the, the sign that faces the residential community, the portion of Route nine. We're open to all the same conditions that were set forth in the prior resolution for the other billboard on Route thirty-five that was approved. We're also open to restrictions on content, depending on how the board members feel about that. And we could certainly follow the two thousand seventeen resolution for the other as a model and a guide on that. I think the.
Plus all the other conditions that we agreed to.
Right, plus all the other conditions that the applicant has agreed to. I also think Mr. Gerber did an excellent job explaining the DOT regulatory process. And the fact that I understand your concern, sir, about the number of signs on the highway. But given this location and the restrictions on the distances, I think it's unlikely you're probably gonna have any more signs within this corridor in Sayerville. And I also think on the planning side, I think Mr. McDonough did an excellent job on the proofs for the positive and negative criteria on establishing site suitability. And really, from a practical standpoint, the visual impact from the sign. I mean, I recall, because I was here back in two thousand seventeen, there were the neighbors that were here. And we did meet with them and I think obviously none of the members of the public are here tonight, so I think that speaks volumes. So for all those reasons, Mr. Chairman, we would ask that the board act favorably upon the application with the conditions that we've discussed. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any board members have any comments or discussion? If not, can I have a motion on this application?
I've, I've got a comment, like I said before, I mean, it's another sign, I mean, we gotta look at the quality of life of the town. It's clutter, it gets to a point where it's too much. There are some towns that don't have any signage like this. So when is it going to stop? We're, we're always making exceptions for this.
Okay, anyone else? And if not, can I have a motion on this application? We have a motion. Motion's been, motion's been made to accept and second it. Okay. We'll call the.
Mr. Kaczynski?
Yes.
Mr. Espinozinho?
Yes.
Mr. Emma?
No.
Mr. Castle Graham?
Yes.
Mrs. Gartsky?
Yes.
Mr. Don.
Yes. Application has been approved.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, and I'll work with your attorney, obviously, on the terms of the resolution. Okay, thank you, have a good evening.
Let's, let's take a 10-minute break. We've been going for a while and we only have one application left. Okay, Sarvo zoning board is back after our brief recess. Last, uh, last application tonight is. Let me find the number and the information. Twenty-three dash ten Verizon.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. Uh, for the record, Richard Schneider of the law firm of Vogel, Cheek, Collins and Schneider on behalf of the applicant, um, New York S M S A Limited Partnership Doing Businesses Verizon Wireless. Let me, uh, before I make some brief opening remarks, take the opportunity to briefly thank, uh, your board professionals that the applicant appreciates and it's frankly not true of all municipalities of getting your review reports to us timely. Oftentimes we walk in and get them at five o'clock, so we do, we do appreciate, um, that. The matter before you this evening is an application by Verizon Wireless uh, to construct a wireless communication facility on property located at One Victory Plaza. For purposes of the record, that's block 278, lot 1 and 2 on the borough's tax map, commonly known as the Circle Motel. As originally proposed, the application sought approval of a 150-foot communications tower, which would be located within an approximate 42 by 21-foot compound, which would house all of the radio equipment, including a generator to support the wireless communication facility. Uh, both the tower and the compound is ultimately designed to accommodate potential co-locators. The key point there being that if in fact there were, the tower was approved, as we hope it would be, uh, that if future co-locators, whether they be our competitors or others, they would have the opportunity to co-locate on the tower and to locate their equipment within the existing compound. Let, let me make an important comment here, uh, at the outset of the hearing. As we, uh, prepare for this hearing, um, the design team, which you'll hear from this evening, uh, reassessed certain, uh, one critical aspect of the application. And that is, I had originally mentioned that the application sought approval of 150-foot. Uh, we went back and frankly gave that some serious reconsideration. The point being that we did not want to propose a tower height that was beyond what we actually needed to meet our technical objectives. We went back to Verizon and after some consideration, we are in a position to reduce the height of the tower to 120 feet and we're formally amending our application to reduce the height. We will have exhibits and we have a revised visual analysis, which does reflect the reduction down to 120, um, uh, feet. The borough has a wireless communication ordinance, which is relatively comprehensive. Um, under that ordinance, as applied to this application, the application seeks the following relief. A use variance because the use is not permitted in this zone district. A height variance because the height exceeds that which is permitted in the B3 zone. A front yard setback, uh, because the compound at its closest point is 17 feet to the Route 9 and 35 property line, as well as preliminary and final site plan approval. Um, let me make, uh, one or two final comments before we, uh, proceed with our first witness. Um, I, and frankly, most of my, um, design team here or my team here in total have an experienced team here and we've been doing it, a lot of us close to, to 30-plus years. And I think all of us are fully cognizant and appreciative of, in often cases where a municipality may have some legitimate concerns about, uh, communications towers in terms of towers as opposed to other types of structures. And while we can appreciate that, I would respectfully suggest, as you hear the testimony here this evening, I think this site, among other sites that this board or other boards have considered in the past, really is uniquely and particularly suitable, both from a radio frequency perspective and frankly from a land use perspective. The point being that if you're going to have a communications tower, given this property's proximity to transportation corridors, I think this is the type of site and location where you do want to encourage those, um, uh, types of facilities. In terms of witnesses, members of the board, I have four witnesses. I don't know that we'll get to all of them tonight, but I'll do my best and I'll be appreciative of, obviously you not going late into the night. Um, the four witnesses, uh, are as follows. The first will be the applicant's radio frequency engineer, Mr. David Stern. The second would be the applicant's EMF expert, Mr. Michael Fisher. To be honest, Mr. Fisher's here for the limited purpose of just confirming that the levels of radio frequency emissions are in strict compliance. I would not, in, just in terms of planning for the night, I would not anticipate his testimony on direct to be more than five to, to 10 minutes. The third is the applicant's site plan architect, Mr. Frank Colosserdo. And the fourth and hopefully last witness, uh, is the applicant's professional planner, Tim Kronk. So unless the board has any, um, interim questions for me, I'm prepared to proceed with the first witness. Mr. Stern, David Stern, we can have him sworn.
David Stern, S T E R N.
Yes, I do.
Sir. Let me take a couple of moments.
When he's, use one microphone and he can use the other.
Mr. Stern, uh, let me just take a couple of moments to, um, qualify you for purposes of tonight's proceedings. What is your profession?
I am a, uh, an expert in the frequency, in the area of radio frequency engineering. I have over 35 years' experience in that field. I have a bachelor's degree in electrical engineering from the University of Illinois. I was with Motorola Communications in Chicago and their SIOR engineering group for six years. For six years, I was director of engineering for SIOR 1 of Central New Jersey. And for the last 27 years, I have been the principal, uh, and owner of VCOM telecommunications engineering located in Edison, New Jersey, and have been approved as an expert in the field of radio frequency communications before more than 500 boards.
Have you been before this board before?
Sure have.
Okay, so you're qualified.
Thank you.
Uh, thank you, David. Um, uh, let's take a moment just to, uh, put on the record what you've done in preparation for your testimony. You have visited the site, correct?
Yes, I have.
And you're familiar with Verizon Wireless's existing coverage, correct?
Yes, I am.
And you are the author and prepare of a radio frequency report, uh, dated February 2nd, 2023, that was submitted with this application, correct? Um, and you are, uh, familiar with the telecommunications ordinance of the borough, um, as well as the site plan, at least as it specifically relates to radio frequency issues, correct?
Correct.
And you've also had the opportunity to review the respective review reports of both the borough engineer and planner, correct?
Yes, I have.
Okay. Um, the board, um, presumably is familiar with Verizon Wireless, but let's, uh, in a concise manner, let's just take a, a couple of moments just to understand Verizon's licensing as it may relate to this application. In the interest of time, Verizon has licensed that very specific frequency bands by the FCC, is that correct?
That's correct. They're licensed in this area for 700 megahertz, 800 megahertz, the PCS band, which is 1900 megahertz, the AWS band, which is 2, 2100 megahertz, the C-band, which is 3.7 gigahertz, 3.7 gigahertz, um, as well as the CBRS band at 3.5 gigahertz. Um, the last two bands are more recent, uh, and they're deploying both 4G and 5G across those bands. But they have all those bands to deploy.
David, let me, um, before we get into the specifics of this application, the specifics of this application, um, in your report, uh, you do, at least in my opinion, a, a nice concise, uh, description and in description at least, that, that I think we all can understand of, of why in certain cases, an applicant such as Verizon comes before the board. And you break it down, uh, into two kind of distinct areas. One is that an applicant such as Verizon comes before the board where there is a, a coverage gap and in other cases where there is a capacity gap. Without getting into the specifics initially of this application, can you just in some general terms explain for the board, uh, what is a coverage gap as compared to a capacity deficiency?
Absolutely. Um, for a coverage gap, we've identified an area where we have insufficient coverage. For Verizon Wireless, um, that means in-building coverage. So we're looking for coverage in-building for mobile, uh, for portable devices, um, not just on-street, in-your-car coverage, but we're looking for in-building coverage. So even though you may have, uh, coverage outside and you're with your mobile phone outside or your mobile device, it's when you're inside that we're trying to make sure we ensure we have, um, usable coverage, reliable service.
And that, and just enter, that's something that has evolved over the years. You testified here previously, perhaps the last time you were here, the, and I don't remember exactly when that was, the focus or at least historically might have been when you're in a vehicle or outside and that has changed over the years.
Correct. And then that, and that's just because of the way the usage of our devices has gone. Um, and that predominantly, uh, the, the uses have significantly changed. Uh, one of the statistics that the CDC collects is how many people only have a wireless phone or a landline phone. And now in the United States, 68% of adults only have a wireless phone, which I've actually found shocking because I grew up with a landline phone and that was important. None of my children has a wired phone. They all live in three different places, they all have wireless phones. And that's what's happened with it is it's all wireless. So, and all their devices are indoors most of the time or they're commute to work or at work. So that was a significant change for us.
CDC, what was?
CDC keeps that information.
No, what, what does those initials mean?
The Center for ZEECS Control. I actually have a copy.
Why would they?
Because we should kill ourselves with these phones. What's happening? They just don't tell us.
Well, no, that's, I was just wondering why they would be involved with this.
They, they, they maintained a, a study, they called it the Wireless Substitution Early Release Estimates for National Health Interview Survey. And they do this every year and they update it every year for about years later. So the last report, which I can ask to give you a copy, it was from 2021. So, but they maintain that statistic and, and, and I, it was amazing to me as somebody that grew up with a wired phone. It's changed.
Amazing that the CDC is worried about that. Okay.
Yeah. It could be a separate discussion. The, the other statistic that, that we, that we monitor is the DINA, which oversees, uh, the 911 people. They monitor how many calls are made from a wireless phone for 911 calls. Now it's 80% of 911 calls come from a wireless phone, not from a wireless one, it's 80%. So it's, so that's why when I talk about we want in-building coverage, I'll get to it in a few minutes. This area has some significant in-building locations that I'm trying to maintain, as well as some of the most traveled outdoor locations in, in, in Saraville. So we'll talk about that in a minute. But from a coverage standpoint, I want to make sure I have in-building coverage. The other side of that corner is capacity. I have enough coverage, but I don't have enough capacity in the network. I've added all the data elements, I've added all of the antennas to my existing sites and put them at whatever I can do to get the maximum out of those sites. And I've just run out of capacity. Um, we're seeing that in a lot of places in the network where we, where we hit a peak usage. Um, on the network, we just can't handle all the calls. When that happens, you actually start seeing drop calls as the weakest mobiles on the network lose connectivity and then fall off. You actually get drop calls from that poor audio quality, where instead of being able to understand the person, you lose that speaker recognition and you get that dolphin tone to the, to the voice or very tinny as the bit error rate goes up in the data. Another thing to understand with our, with the Verizon network now is we've turned off all the old, all the technologies, it's 4G and 5G now. So every single phone call you make, voice call you make, is on a data network. So it's an IP-based phone call. So if you get, if you get your phones from, uh, Verizon on your FiOS or Cable Vision or Optimum from the, from the cable company, they're using a voice-over IP technology. All of the Verizon voice calls now are on 4G or 5G with the voice, over the voice. So everything is data. So that's, so, um, that's another six we're looking at. So everything is the data network. So when, when, when the bit error rate goes up on the data network, that's when you get poor audio quality and that's where you get drop calls. So in the case of this particular site, we have both issues going on. We have insufficient coverage in some venues and we also have a capacity problem because of the venues I'll speak about in a minute. And one of the biggest venues, which is the Driscoll Bridge, uh, and the Route 9 Bridge and the Route 35 Bridge over the, over the Raritan River, Raritan Bay, um, all are significant generators of wireless traffic on the system. And when events happen on the Parkway or Route 9 that stop traffic, the network gets, 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 gets hammered and we just can't handle the amount of traffic. With that combined and some of the other venues around the site, that we're looking for a site in this area.
Do you, with that background, David, do you have with you this evening, um, certain exhibits that could help us understand, um, the need for this particular facility at this location?
Yes, I'm, I'm going to walk through a few exhibits, um, and just try to, and try to walk you through what our design goals were. Um, and then some of the things we, we looked at and some of the things that we eliminated from choice because they, they, they didn't work out so well. Is this going to be A1?
Yeah, but let me just add, these are actual blowups of the, some of the, uh, maps that were contained in the RF report. Do you want me to mark them separately or whatever the board pleases? It's maybe easier to do it that way, but, okay. So why don't we just mark them?
A1.
A1 and however many there are. And we'll go through the title of the exhibit when we get to it. That's A1, David?
This is A1. It's entitled, as A1 with today's date on it, Selco Partnership DBA Verizon Wireless, Saraville, New Jersey, the GSP Bridge Site. And this is the coverage before the site. What I've depicted on here in the orange shading is the existing reliable service for in-building coverage in Saraville. So if this was a outdoor coverage, you're standing outside, you pretty much see mostly orange on here. I agree with you, you'd have mostly orange on here, but this is the in-building coverage.
David, can I just, I'm sorry, can I just interrupt you?
Yes.
Just for one second. The, this, on that map, and it's also reflected in more detail in your report, but just for the record, that map does reflect the existing Verizon sites, which does provide.
Yeah, yeah. Let's just let them go through that. All right, so on the map, I've, I've identified the existing Verizon Wireless sites that provide service in this area. And there was a couple of sites off the map that I just want to identify for us, for as well. So I'm going to really focus on the sites that are actually, that are, that are, that are, that are, uh, critical to this, to this part of the system. So we're going to start down here, this is our Saraville 1 site, the Saraville 1 site. Um, the 2070 Route 35, it's 115-foot monopole. Uh, and our antennas are at the top of that tower. It, that is like the last building, um, before you get into South, um, into South Amboy from, from, from Saraville. before you get into South, into South Ambway from, from, from Sayerville. So it's right on Route 35. Our Sayerville 3 relo, that is, is a co-location tower. That's at the corner of Gawain and Raritan. It's 162-foot lattice tower and our antennas are at 95 feet on that tower. Our Perth Ambway 2 site, that is a 300-foot tower that is located at the bottom of the Route 35 Bridge. I actually was involved in building that tower a long time ago. So, and the antennas for Verizon Wireless are at 73 feet on that tower. Is that right? No, that's not. I apologize. They're at 12 feet on their top. And the ground elevation, I just want to point out is at 7 feet. See over here, this, that's the Perth Ambway 2 site. The Keysby site is located in the Keysby neighborhood of Woodbridge Township. And that is 123-foot monopole and Verizon Wireless antennas are at 91 feet on here. The ground elevation here is also at about 7 feet. We also have two small cells. We have a small, what we call a small cell, which is you'll see an antenna on top of a telephone pole. We call it a cantenna. We have one right across the street of Cardinal McCarrick High School in South, South Ambway. And then we also have one on a building at, make sure I get this right. 110 Main Street. That's a 40-foot building here on Main Street. And really what that is just doing is serving the Main Street area coming out of here. And that's like, was intended to try to offload the area and it didn't, it didn't work out as we had planned on it. So that's why we come back for a monopole because this small cell did not offload what we thought we were going to offload. That is the, so that gap in coverage, just to give you an idea, Main Street in Sayerville, coming down from, from Chevalier, is that how you pronounce it? Chevalier Avenue over here to, to Ridgeway, down to, as, and out to Raritan Street and that area in between here. That's the residential area in here. And then down Main Street here, importance is the, is the Epic Church, Middlesex County Utilities Complex, as well as the Middlesex County Fire Academy. All big users, meaning that they have, they could have a significant volume of traffic of people in them and generating wireless calls. I know the Fire Academy has training classes going on every day with hundreds of people coming down there, all of them needing communications back to wherever, wherever you go back to and their two-way radios. If they're a Middlesex County person, Middlesex County employee or on the Middlesex County system, they'll have good radio coverage in there on the two-way radio. But other than that, they don't have real good coverage on the wireless. Because the indoor and the, and the nature of that facility, it's a pretty hardened and it's a pretty big building. So all of these places are what we consider high generators of traffic. And as I said, we talked about the Garden State Parkway, the Edison Route 9 Bridge and the Route 35 Bridge coming down in here. So what I wanted to do was show you a Google Earth map of this area and talk a little about what our decision tree was in this area and how we came to it. Next, that is A2. So A2 is just entitled Verizon GSP Bridge and it is a Google Earth map. And I depicted on here a zoom in of the area that we were focused on, on A1, where I've really focused in, into the area where we were looking at it. So if I look at the board, we have the Garden State Parkway, Route 9, Route 35. Verizon Wireless is Perth Ambway 2 site, the Keysby site, Sayerville 3 relo site, as well as the South Ambway small cell that we did, it didn't work out too well from a traffic standpoint. So the goal here was to provide, was to offload, offload half of the traffic on the bridges. So one of the things that we noticed is we had problems on the down, coming down the bridge because the Keysby site, because the bridge is here, the car, the, the car, the mobile devices on the bridge can't see this site because you're trying to go through the bridge itself to see it. So it's blocking the coverage. So we were stretching the Sayerville 3 site and the Perth Ambway 2 site. Perth Ambway 2 site is not pointed at the bridge. It's got an antenna pointed down Route 35. So that was part of the, part of it. So we were losing coverage from the Keysby site and stretching out these sites. So the, that was one problem we were running into. Second problem we have is we've got this generator of traffic we spoke about. Fire Academy, Epic Church, and the whole Middlesex Utilities Complex. We don't have in-building coverage in that area. Very poor in-building coverage. So that was an area of us. And then we have poor in-building coverage in here. These antennas were designed for Sayerville 3, were designed to really focus on the Parkway. We had removed, we had relocated from the tower that's about a half mile south of there, that's right on top of the Parkway. Relocated there. Lease issues, I wasn't hitting that one, but there was, there were lease issues there and we moved to the other co-location tower, which is at the corner of Gawain and Raritan. So the primary goal here was, as I said, residential area here, next to the, next to the Route 9 and the Parkway. The big complexes over here and then, and then the, the bridge and try to offload the bridge traffic. One other thing to note, why, why David, does that, the relo 3 site help you? When you, when you go through this territory, when you're coming down Main Street, you notice the Parkway is elevated above that part of Sayerville. Say, this area is lower and this area is elevated higher. So I don't have good line of sight from this tower to this part of Sayerville. It's just because I'm basically overshooting it, just because the ground is there putting, covering up where I can try to get to it. So I'm trying to now, by going here, I have line of sight from the top of this tower straight into these buildings to do that. And I've got straight into here. So each, this site will serve half, this side will serve the other half. So Keysby will serve the northern half, the, our new site will serve the southern half of the bridge and I'll be able to cut that traffic in half. The other thing that does is it gives life to this, to the, to the Perth Ambway 2 site. It gets capacity back as well as the Sayerville 3 relo site gets capacity back because I'm putting the capacity here where I need it. And these guys, I extend the, for those sites by being able to put this site in here. Let's talk about a couple of other items that I know that Rich wants to talk about. Why did we pick this site? We originally had looked at the movie theater. Movie theater property was not interested. They have their own plans, maybe someday. I remember being in a movie there about 20 years ago, I think, was the last time I was there. So that was the first place we looked. We talked to a couple of the other business area. The only one that was interested was the motel. So that's who we went to. We, so we did look around. There is one municipal property. There is one permitted property over here at the water line. Right at the water here is an MW property and a township property. But I don't think we want to build one right at the river, right, right on the river shore. But that's, so that, that, we eliminated that pretty quickly saying, you know, that's, that's not it. But that, that is permitted, are permitted in this little stretch here next to Route 35. There are other permitted areas, MW and Izone, marine waterfront and industrial zones. Those are, on this map, they will be out over here. The northern tier across the top of Sayerville, up against the Raritan River, is, is part of that. We do have future, we have, we have a future site out there that we plan and that will be in the industrial zone, is what we're, what we're planning. So we have one more site coming. Hope, it's a colo, it's a co-location, but but we do have something planned, but it will be in the Izone. So putting a site over here, over here in the Izone over here, that, that we've got ability to put a site won't give me the coverage, won't give me the capacity relief that I need in this area. The other two sites we looked at were Middlesex County Fire Academy, beautiful 300-foot tower. Not available. They're not, they don't want us on there. At this point, they're not looking for any wireless carriers to go on that tower. New Jersey Transit has a tower here. 200-foot tower. Actually, it's right next to our small cell. The problem with that site, and I'll explain it carefully, is I don't get the advantage of having the site where I could use all of the sectors. So if I point this sector this way to try to offload it, I don't get any of the other, we just talked about. I don't, I, I've just taken one sector out of the three that I have available to me. And I've lost two-thirds of the, of the goal of this site, which was to offload here, here, and then, and then, and then pick up this residential area. I'll fix that and I'll fix this and I'll fix this. One sector. I, I lose two-thirds of the, of the capacity I'm investing in, in that site. So that one was not, you know, that turned out not to be, from an engineering, engineering standpoint, wasn't optimal for us to use to try to get the best bang for, for one site. So this site comes in here and fixes, fixes all those items by, by, by taking, you know, by using this. We also evaluated 120 feet, 150 feet. And I, we just didn't, we didn't get the incremental oomph that, that you would think we get. It wasn't, it wasn't producing anymore. Road deck is about 130 feet at the top here. So 150 feet wasn't, it wasn't getting me over the crest down to the other side. The other sites, all about 100 feet above ground level at about seven foot ground elevation, 90 feet at about 30 feet ground elevation. So we're all keeping on the same height. The 150 that was, I, you know, I felt that the 120 was adequate. Worked with the Verizon Wireless engineers. The 120 is the height that we need. And that will push, push back the sites in the area. At the same time, making sure that these sites have much, have new added relief from their, from what capacity they have. They gain capacity back by putting the site there. Third exhibit is just kind of putting that into, into summation. This one, that is A3 with today's date. Selco Partnership DBA Verizon Wireless Sayerville, New Jersey, Garden State Bridge, GSP Bridge Site. And now we put the site up and we have very, the antennas are very focused, focused up the Parkway and Route 9 and Route 35. Another antenna pointed here, like basically straight, it's basically pointed straight at the Fire Academy. That's where the antenna is pointed, right at that building. And then one antenna pointed down into the residential area here and picking that up. So we felt that that was the best way to do it. We filled it. The antennas have a very focused area to fill that, that portion of Sayerville. And as I said before, still have plans to build another site in this general area, but it's a, it's a, it's a cold, taking advantage of a co-location opportunity in the.
Just one, one question. What you've shown specifically on A1 and A3 in terms of showing the existing coverage and the proposed coverage, that's based on accepted computer propagation models?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm sorry. Alright. Alright. We talked about the permitted zones. There is no lighting intended on here. FAA cleared the site at the 150 feet. Definitely cleared it of 120 feet. We don't anticipate any interference of public safety radios. The county, the, the Sayerville is actually co-located on a number of facilities. Actually, all, both of the facilities they use for communications are co-located with wireless carriers today. So we don't anticipate any interference from this to public safety radios. And if there is an issue, they, they, the, the police know who to contact at the FCC to report if there is a, a significant problem. And the connection to the site will be done with Verizon fiber.
What about capacity? Capacity. So you've gone through that. I see you have some other exhibits. Do you want to go into those now or are they not necessary?
I don't think it's necessary.
Okay. Let me ask you a couple of.
Unless the board wants to hear.
Okay. The board will let us know if they want to he, hear some more technical information. Let me, let me ask you this. The ordinance does require that we investigate whether there was any alternative technology which would eliminate the need for the wireless.
Great question.
Particular facility. And by that, they may mean some outdoor distributed antenna system or something else. Can you comment on that for the board?
Sure. Um, I kind of alluded to the fact we started down that path with the site down here in South, in South Ambway. And it really didn't provide any, any relief that we needed. We would have to do a significant deployment of many, many nodes. And I don't know of how we would be able to do the Garden State Parkway with, 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 with microcells or distributed antenna systems. A macro cell is the most cost-efficient, most radio-efficient way of, of doing that. To get into all those buildings, we would have to deploy in-building systems in all those buildings to try to meet the same requirement as a macro cell.
Okay. Let me make some, let me ask you some summary questions in, in, in conclusion. There are no, based on the available properties and their location, there are no either permitted or conditionally permitted zones which would allow you to meet your technical objectives in this case. Is that correct?
Correct.
And in your opinion, after further looking at the matter, you believe that 120 feet is the minimum height necessary to meet your technical objectives. Is that correct?
I do.
And that 120-foot height, while you're not the site plan engineer or architect, will still allow for co-location below that on the tower, maintaining a general 10-foot separation.
Yes, it will.
Okay. And in your, in your professional opinion, is this site strictly, I'm not asking you to comment from a planning perspective, but strictly from a radio frequency perspective, is this site particularly suitable for this type of use from a radio frequency perspective?
Yes, it is.
Mr. Chairman, nothing further for this witness?
So one quick question. How do you know that in the buildings, they don't have coverage? Do you get complaints or do you actually go out and?
We get, we get complaints.
Okay.
We got complaints and I have relationships with people that work at the Fire Cat, at the, at the Fire Training Center. So, and they've told me they got terrible coverage there. When you, when you could fix it, this is over many years.
And, and like, what about in a residence? Do you actually go out and test things or you just go along?
We use the computer model and we use drive tests to verify the computer model. So let me, I'll explain. So the signal level you're seeing here is a minus 95 dB. So that's just the signal level that we measure. We know that at minus 115 dBm, the calls start to fall apart. So we've gone out and drove tests, we've done lab testing where the calls fall apart. So in an area that I don't have, that I'm, I'll call it a rural area where my focus is just to have vehicular coverage. I'll, my, this number would be the minus 105. But I'm adding a 10 dB factor in for in-building to, to do that. But I know, and I have this 10 dB fade margin in between the 105 and the 115 where I know other things cause variation in signal level. So I know where it falls apart. That, I've, I've done that at so many times, you know, I've looked at that number. So measuring this signal, we drive around and measure, just what we didn't measure specifically, but we go and I measured signals and we have our model tuned to that level. So we know what it looks like. So we've gone out and driven all over the place. I've driven, I've driven in Sayerville a number of times. So I know what 800 megahertz and 2, and 2.1 gigahertz looks like from a frequency standpoint. So I can match it up to what I've done for the computer model. And I know my computer model is tuned in with all of its variables set to the right levels. So I'm comfortable when I say in A1 that I don't have real good service in here. I know I don't have real good service in this part of Sayerville.
Okay, thank you.
I have a question though. Regarding the DBMs, there's a lot of various phones today, some cheap, some good ones. As technology advances and phones will get better, they get better every six months or so. Will that be less of a strain on your DBM? Is it anything to do with the technology in the phone?
It's actually a great question. But we don't change, the specific receiver and the transmitter don't change by much. They're still the same, the physics are the same. So I, I, if I make it too sensitive, then it picks. if I make it too sensitive, then it picks up all the noise. If I don't make it sensitive enough, then it, then it doesn't pick up the signal. So it's set to a certain level, the physics don't change at each frequency, the physics don't change. All the other good stuff, all the guts in it make it better. But a phone is getting smaller and smaller, which means the antenna is getting smaller and smaller. That's why these, these got bigger, actually these got bigger. Remember we had the flip phones, they were tiny. They were tiny. These got bigger. You know, at a certain point, it, the, the antenna is getting smaller and smaller, wasn't a good, didn't work out as well. So at a certain point, you want that antenna to be big enough to get, to get the information. Remember, if you look at my, if you look at the Motorola portable phone from the nineteen eighties, that antenna was that height. So there, there, you know, when you look at the frequency bands, you see what heights you're doing at. There's, you're, you're looking at certain wavelengths and saying, that makes the ideal height for the, the height of the antenna. The whole antenna is embedded in that whole platform.
Gotcha. Gotcha. And, and, and at some point, we're going to move to a hundred percent cellular. There's going to be no more landlines at some point. I mean, the generations are going to move on and that's, you know, and but here's my question.
It's a good assumption, but I don't think we're going to get there because I can't do the volume of data that I can do on fiber now stagnate. So I'm not going to see fiber. I put, we, we're, we're working on a project right now to put a fiber. Fiber is approximately one inch diameter. It's got the, the cables of one inch diameter. It's got a thousand fibers on it. And each one of those fibers carries hundreds of gigabits of data at the same time. Okay. I, I can't do that in wireless.
So you may have answered my question, but I'm not trying to excuse, because I don't, I'm not familiar with vernacular. But with the, with the frequencies, right? They, they're limited for a reason for our health, right? As, as again, let's just say cellular for a moment. We're going to keep needing more and more of these towers, I would think. I mean, we, look at us now, right? We need it for that section. All that will be orange at one point, my, is my presumption. What, what is our, I mean, how many do we need in Sayerville? How, I mean, you may or may not know the answer, but how many do we need to get a hundred percent coverage? Because we're going to get there.
It's, it's actually a very good question. And it depends on what's generating the traffic. In this area, you have significant generators traffic. And that's, that's part of the issue. So this part of Sayerville is not as wireless intensive as that part of Sayerville is. So that also drives how much I need. The other, the other, the other, you actually, it's a good question is how much am I going to need? If we drive everything to, let's say the Verizon doesn't want to build files. They all want to do wireless files. How much are they going to need? They still got to build fiber to that spot. They still got to be fiber there. They can't, they can't backhaul five hundred homes worth of all the data you're generating Netflix and everything else you're watching over it. They still have to build a fiber. So there is a certain limit. And you're right, there is a certain limit to the frequencies. The other, the other that goes actually to where your point was making is the frequencies we're getting are higher and higher in frequency bands, which makes smaller and smaller coverage. Remember, when I was here twenty years ago, doing eight hundred megahertz cell sites were bigger. Now we went to, to, to two gig. Cell site started to shrink. The newest stuff, the stuff we're putting in Manhattan, twenty eight gig, it's tiny. These sites cover five hundred feet. But it doesn't make sense to put that in here. It might make sense to put that into the Fire Academy, just to cover the Fire Academy. So that's where we're going.
Okay. Well, thank you very much.
I have a question, just curious. This tower is going to build that coverage gap. What tower would be able to upgrade that power if you need for the future?
How do you mean? The, the design criteria that we've given the engineers is make sure everybody can get on it, get the co-locations. It's available to co-locate on. And that we could put our maximum antennas on.
But I, I think the question was, does the tower structure itself allow Verizon to modify its antenna installation?
Yeah, if you have to go the next generation.
Only reason I'm asking is because by Chevrolet Road, the National Lead, it's supposed to be developed. I don't know what, what's going in there, but there could be a significant amount of traffic.
Right.
That tower be, be able to upgrade.
I don't know, because I don't know what's going there yet. I don't know how much of a generator traffic. You put something that's like the American Dream Wall, then I would have to do a lot more in this area.
The tower is modified.
Yeah. But then maybe you have to do more in that area. If you put something, I mean, the Sarah property, Sarah property has been there for days. Hopefully someday we'll get something built up.
Anybody else, any board members, engineers? Thank you.
Just thank you, Mr. Fisher. So be brief, Mr. Chairman.
I can say your name and your title.
Michael Fisher, F I S C H E R. Employed by the firm Centerline, based in Westbridge, Massachusetts. I'm the Director of Engineering at Centerline.
I will, I'll be brief. Um, Mr. Fisher, um, what is your?
Oh, I'm sorry.
For the board? I do.
I'm sorry.
You've been before the board this board before?
I think I was many years ago, but over the past twenty years, I've been accepted as a expert witness.
Okay. So we can qualify him unless you are covered.
An expert witness as.
Radio frequency RF safety and FCC compliance.
Mr. Fisher, having been recognized as an expert in this field, we'll, we'll be real brief this evening. You are originally the preparer of group report that was submitted in this application. And the purpose of that report was to confirm that the levels of radio frequency emissions are in strict compliance with FCC standards, correct?
That's correct.
And you prepared that analysis at the originally proposed one hundred and fifty foot elevation, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. And at my request, did you modify or revise or supplement your report? Just to err on the side of caution for the purposes of confirming that the levels of radio frequency emissions would be in compliance at the one hundred and twenty foot, correct?
Yes, it was revised on June twentieth and I re-stamped that report the same date.
Chairman, I'm going to take the opportunity, I'm just going to quickly mark it. I think we're up to eight four.
This was not in our packet because it's revised.
His original report at the one fifty was, but here's a supplemental one for the one twenty, just for purposes of record.
Okay.
And in the interest of time, could I proceed as, as, as the report's being handed out? Mr. Fisher, you prepared this analysis for the purposes confirming that the levels are in strict compliance with FCC standards, correct?
That's correct.
And in doing so, you utilize the required FCC methodology, correct?
Correct.
And generally, that methodology in your analysis assumes a series of worst case scenario assumptions, so to speak?
Correct, we use upper limit radio powers.
Upper level, okay. And very succinctly, the FCC, if it permits one hundred percent, what would the stand, what would the percentage be from this site?
So based on our simulations, which perform the FCC prescribed, prescribed calculations, the effective exposure at ground level, anywhere at ground level around this proposed facility would be below one percent of the allowable FCC limit for the general population.
So one hundred percent permitted by the FCC, we're less than one percent.
Correct.
And that uses the FCC methodology.
Correct.
Nothing further, Mr. Chairman.
That's the worst case. If you get into the worst spot, it's less than one percent.
Correct. The only other thing I would add is, you know, New Jersey has their own limit as well. That limit is equal to the FCC's occupational limit, which is less restrictive than the general public limit. So it's also compliant with New Jersey's laws.
Okay, thank you. Any questions from board members? Chairman Safety?
Not necessarily safety, but the height, just reading your report, it's been indicated we have a hundred and twenty foot high tower. This indicates the antennas are mounted at one twenty. The height of the pole is one twenty one. There's a seven foot lightning rod, which makes it one twenty eight. Is, is, is one twenty eight the highest elevation?
It's one hundred and twenty foot structure, but then there's a very thin lightning rod, which will be described by the next witness.
Just wanted to understand it, thank you.
The antennas are not at one twenty eight.
Correct, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next witness. Thank you. Frank? Mr. Colasurdo? Oh, we put that, you want to mark those? Yeah, well. Have counsel, we have this one, I'll mark that one, why don't you mark that as A five? And I'll get to that in a second. A five is just the one sheet of the plan that we've revised to show the one hundred and twenty feet. But I'll, we'll get to that in one second. Very briefly in view of the late hour, Mr. Colasurdo, you are a licensed architect of the state of New Jersey.
That's correct.
Very concisely, the benefit of your education experience and your prior acceptance.
I graduated from New York Institute of Technology with a Bachelor of Architecture degree. I was licensed by the state of New Jersey to practice architecture in nineteen ninety six. I've been designing wireless telecommunications facilities for all over thirty years now. I testified in hundreds of boards throughout the state of New Jersey and been accepted as a qualified witness.
Okay, we accept.
Thank you.
Frank, you.
We do.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Spell your last name.
C O L A S U R D O.
That first name?
Frank.
C O L A S U R D O.
D O.
D O.
Do you solemnly swear or affirm that by truthfully be put forward?
I do.
In the interest of time, Frank, you've had the opportunity to visit the site, correct?
That's correct.
And you're the preparer of the site plan that's before the board, correct?
That's correct.
And you've had the opportunity to review the borough of Sayerville ordinances as they may impact this application, correct?
That's correct.
And you've had the opportunity to review the respective review reports issued by the Borough Planner and Township Engineer. And you also were in attendance at the TCC meeting held on this application, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. Hopefully without me interrupting you, why don't you start by just going through, before we get to your exhibit, why don't you take a couple of moments to describe the property in terms of its location, zone, district, size and existing improvements? And these are the exact same, with the exception of the one exhibit, which I'll get to, what he's now referring to is the exact same site plans that you have, so I'm not going to mark those.
Okay. So I've turned to sheet Z three of my site plans. It's an overall site plan of the property. Contains a motel that has seventy nine parking spots associated with the hotel or motel. It's flanked by routes nine and thirty five on the west and north side and Route four on the east side. And there's a carpet manufacturer to the south. What Verizon is proposing tonight is a wireless telecommunications facility. It's basically a twenty foot, a forty foot fenced in area. With inside that fenced in area, there will be some radio cabinets. And now a one hundred and twenty foot tall monopole. We were proposing one fifty, but we were able to bring it down to a hundred and twenty feet. That location is in, I would say, the north side of the property adjacent to Route nine and thirty five. There's also two means of egress in and out of the property. We are not taking any, removing any parking spaces to install this. It's also being proposed in a existing impervious surface parking area or it's, I guess it's parking. There are some dumpsters there now, there were some containers. And there were some striping that I think could possibly be used for eighteen rail type of semi trucks that might have to pull in at night. And you use the motel to stay overnight.
Just to clarify, because this was brought up by both the township engineer and planner. The two spots that we're using for this facility is not included, I repeat, is not included within the seventy nine spaces that's reflected on the site.
That's correct. Seventy five is required as a seventy nine, that, and that's located within a courtyard of the motel. I'm going to turn to sheet Z E, which is my zoning exhibit.
A five?
A five. So I want to just jump right to the monopole to just clarify the height. The top of this monopole is at a hundred and twenty one feet above grade. The top of the antennas are at a hundred and twenty three feet above grade. The center line of the antennas are at one twenty. So you kept hearing that one twenty, one twenty, that's the line of, of the antennas above grade. Then I do have a lightning rod, which is seven feet above, which will put us at one twenty eight above grade. So the highest structure that we're proposing is a, a three quarter of an inch, seven foot tall lightning rod. That's hundred and twenty eight feet above grade. At the base, we're proposing three radio cabinets. What we refer to as a PPC power protection cabinet. It's an outdoor electrical panel and next to that or actually even built into it is where we land our fiber from the street. So it's a telephone and electric panel all wrapped in one. This is all being secured within a chain link fence, six foot high fence with a twelve foot wide lockable gate. The equipment itself is on a concrete pad. At the TCC was requested that we raise the pad a little bit because apparently there's, when Sandy happened, there was some water on this property, even though we're not in a flood zone. So we did raise the pad, six inches above grade. If the, your consultants wanted a little higher, we, we could still do that. I'm sorry. We do have bowers to protect from any possible impacts of vehicles driving in and out of the property. Should also note that this facility is also backed up with a thirty KW diesel generator. That generator itself gets tested once a week, runs for about forty five minutes. Generator will meet all the New Jersey noise standards with respect to the decibel levels and adjacent properties. It meets all the emissions, New Jersey emissions. It's fueled. Well, if it's running full time, it can run for about forty hours before it's first fill up.
You say four or forty?
Forty.
Forty.
Forty. And that vehicle would be like a Ford pickup with a, a tank in the back, a small gas tank. It's, it's not a big oil tank that you see driving down the roads. Quick, some quick facility statistics. The facility is designed to be unmanned, so don't require any potable water. Doesn't produce any sewage or solid waste. But being unmanned, I don't want you to think that it's not monitored. This facility is monitored twenty four hours a day, seven days a week through a series of silent alarms. If anybody tries to tamper with the equipment, we know about it. If any of the equipment malfunctions, we know about it. Signals are sent through the landline, that fiber line that the RF engineer was talking about to a switch station. And a technician is dispatched if, if, if needed. And they'll be on site within an hour. As far as maintenance goes, once this thing is up and running, you can expect the Verizon tech to be here once every four to six weeks. Kick the tires, make sure everything is working correctly. And he drives a Ford Explorer type of vehicle. We need a two hundred amp electric service, a telephone line. The equipment itself doesn't have any glare, any smoke on the generator. It starts up as a diesel generator. It'll have some odor, but then when it warms up, that already generally goes away. Smoke, glare, noise, we comply with all the noise standards. There's no vibrations from this equipment. And the lighting that we're proposing is at the base. It's a floodlight type of system, motion sensor, motion sensor and photocell. Or sometimes we'll use a tech switch. All, all the lumens from these, from these lights are, will stay within the compound. They're directed directly down into cabinets.
Only two other, only two, only with two and a half other comments. Well, we certainly can cooperate with the board's planner that one of the questions was the opportunity for landscaping. We're in a paved parking lot next to a motel. I don't, I don't know that landscaping is appropriate, but someone has a suggestion where amenable.
Your planner also asked us, I'm sorry.
Your planner had also asked us to provide an excerpt from our lease confirming that we. an excerpt from our lease confirming that we have access to the premises, which we did as part of the supplemental submission, and the only other comment which I'll make, which I shared with your zoning officer, he had raised a comment in his review report, there had previously been some type of storage containers at the property that he had asked to be removed, we've confirmed that those have been removed. I have nothing further for Mr. Colasurdo.
Only silent alarms, no video surveillance?
That's correct, only silent alarms.
I just, one other question. Frank, the, I forgot to ask you this. The tower is structurally designed in accordance with structural code provisions, and further will be designed for future co-location, so if one of our competitors wants to co-locate hypothetically at 110 feet, usually there's a 10-foot separation, the tower will have sufficient structural capability to accommodate that, correct?
Yeah, yeah, and I also recommend if the board feels this is an appropriate location, I can also have the tower and a foundation designed and built to be extendable by 10 feet. So for some reason, another carrier comes in here and says they can't use the two spots below Verizon, they need an additional 10 feet, it's already built into that pole, but they would have to prove to you that they need it before they extended it. It's just a safety net for the township, if they feel this is an appropriate location.
Speaking of other providers, so you described what's on the ground for Verizon, is there space for other providers?
Yes, as I mentioned in my opening, there's sufficient space within the compound for other carriers.
On the tower and on the ground, okay.
It's a 20 by 40 fenced-in area, we basically are occupying half of it, and the other half is still open for other carriers.
Okay. Any other questions from any members or professionals?
Did you mention the color that's proposed for the monopole?
No, the monopoles are usually common, just a dull galvanized steel.
I don't know if the board has any opinion on it, I just wanted to get it on the record.
Okay.
In this vicinity, I don't know if it's appropriate for you to answer this question, but what, what's the general type of use in this vicinity?
I think our planner is going to address that.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Chairman, just one comment, the landscaping, I think, Mr. Barry, we both raised that the ordinance does require landscaping, obviously landscaping is not going to screen the tower, but you could provide screening around the fenced-in area at the base of the tower, so that's really the board's call, if you want to require some type of landscaping to screen the fence, or if you want to just have that fence visible as you're driving through the area.
The owner of the motel have any preference?
I think the owner of the motel just wants the site approved, I mean, I'd be the worst attorney on the face of the earth if I ever lost a case, because I would put landscape, I don't know that it's appropriate here, but if, if, if you want some shrubs around the fence, I don't know, it's really a board call, it doesn't matter.
It's really only one side, and that's between the grass here between the compound and Route 9, and Route 9 is elevated, so I'm not sure where landscaping is going to do to conceal the facility.
Nice to have a little bit of green on that one side.
Okay.
If the cameras, I could do my last planner, my last, my last witness is the planner.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Give us names of your last name.
M. Crunk, K R O N K.
Do you solemnly swear or affirm that you will testify truthfully before the board?
I do.
In the interest of time, Mr. Crunk, why don't you go through your qualifications?
Yes, I have a Bachelor of Science from the University of Massachusetts, I have 30 years of land use experience predominantly in New Jersey, I am a New Jersey professional planner, and an AICP certified planner, I have been accepted by this board on prior occasions, but it's been a few years since I was here.
Okay, we accept your credentials.
Thank you.
Mr. Crunk, you've visited the site, you've reviewed the site plan, you've had the opportunity to review the municipal review reports, you've looked at the ordinance from a planning perspective, and you're also the individual who undertook the visual analysis for this site, correct?
Yes, the first visit I had to the site was July 20th, 2022, for the purpose, for the purpose of preparing the balloon test for the visual analysis.
Okay. If you could, without me interrupting, I'll ask you to first describe the property from a planning perspective, and also to go through some of the surrounding land use characteristics, and then if you can go through the relevant characteristics of the property, of the application from a planning perspective.
Certainly, if I can get my flash plate out, my pointer out of my pocket, actually, the first thing I'd like to do in discussing the surrounding properties, if I could mark that aerial photograph.
A6.
Subject property is block 278, lots 1 and 2. This property is in the B3 Highway Business District. The B3 has a minimum lot area of 20,000 square feet, the subject property is actually oversized at 2.3 acres. If I refer to Exhibit A6, subject property is outlined approximately the center of the aerial photograph, which is a Google Earth image from April 29th of 2022. I actually have outlined the 2.4 acre lot with a blue lot line, but actually I think the outline of the motel itself with the courtyard is the most predominant feature on there, and is actually stands out more than the lot line itself. There is a red dot outside of the enclosed motel building that represents the proposed tower location. There are four yellow dots on here, these will correspond directly to the photo locations of the balloon test. Aerial photograph is oriented north, we have Route 9 running north-south, 35 coming off the, and ramping around the subject property, so we have frontage on the 935, we have the ramp, and then we have Route 4 on the other side. So three out of the four property lines are fronted, fronted on the, on the rightaways. The property is in this area, this whole section on the east side of 9, this is all B3 zone, R7 starts when we get past Oak Street, and it's not a straight line, but it jogs in and out along there. The, as I mentioned, on July 20th, 2022, we prepared a, performed a balloon test, that's where the visual, visual analysis were based on, that were in your submission package. Those visual analysis were based upon a height of a tower of 150 feet, as has been described, we have modified the application to 120 feet, and I have prepared modified visual analysis boards with those same four photo locations with the height reduced to 120 feet.
You're going to mark them individually, or?
However you want.
What do we do, what do we have to?
That's six, this will be a seven.
I'll do the marking you can do.
Certainly can. These, these, as I mentioned, these are the same photographs that were part of the submission package. Exhibit A7 is photo 1A and 1B, those were the photos, the photo location from Coleman Street, looking back towards the proposed monopole at 648 feet. On the left-hand side, you'll see the existing conditions photo that actively represents the balloon test at that time at 150 feet. Now, in the computer simulation, I have modified it from 150 that's in your packet down to 120 feet. And in that, you'll see, also see the 12 antennas proposed by Verizon Wireless, as well as the seven-foot lightning rod that Mr. Colasurdo described. Exhibit A8 is photos 2A and 2B, once again, the existing conditions balloon test photo at 150 feet on the left, computer simulation on the right, with the reduced tower height to 121 feet, and this is the location over, off of Scott Avenue, and this location is 1,000 feet away from the proposed tower. Exhibit A9 with, exhibits 3A, 3B, with the existing conditions balloon test photo on the left, exhibit three, or location three is up here to the north, looking south, back towards the proposed property at 590 feet away, and on the right-hand side, the computer simulation with the tower height reduced to 121 feet. And the, the last exhibit, A10, this is Exhibit 4A and 4B, this is the view from 399 Oak Street down here, this is 1,200 feet away, this one actually, besides being 1,200 feet away, this is just about to the closest residence to the proposed tower. Wait, let me check that distance. Oak Street is actually the second, this location.
Sorry.
This residence is actually the second closest, it's 1,300 feet, and that's over here off of Oak Street, very near the photo location on 399 Oak. Same thing as before, left-hand side balloon test 150 feet, on the right, modified computer simulation with the tower at 121 feet.
With respect to the Borough of Sayerville Wireless Communication Ordinance, can you review the required relief in conjunction with this application?
Yes, the subject property, as I mentioned, was located in the B3 Highway Business District, that is a zone that does not permit or conditionally permit wireless telecommunications facilities. Thus, the subject application will require a D1 use variance, and we will also require a D6 height variance, the maximum height permitted in the B3 Highway District is 35 feet, the 121-foot tower will exceed the ordinance by 10 feet or 10%, thus being a D6 variance. The wireless ordinance does permit this use on municipally owned and controlled properties, as Mr. Stern testified, none of the borough properties in this area would satisfy the coverage deficiencies that they are experiencing related to coverage, in-building coverage and capacity. The ordinance also does permit this use, conditionally permit this use in two zones, the marine waterfront and the industrial zone. Mr. Stern also testified to the fact that the coverage deficiencies experienced there could not be ameliorated by a facility in either one of those conditionally permitted zones. We also do have one bulk variance, we have a front yard setback that is, it'll be a C2 variance.
Okay. The Borough Planner has, I think, very accurately set forth what the statutory criteria, so let's run through it.
Absolutely.
For a use variance for a wireless communication facility, we're not deemed an inherently beneficial use, but we are afforded a special status, so to speak.
Correct.
In terms of the positive criteria, just in the interest of time, the applicant is required to show that the use advances the general welfare, because the site is particularly suitable for the proposed use, correct?
That is correct.
As a matter of law, I don't want to steal your thunder, but as a matter of law, by virtue of the fact that Verizon holds an FCC license, our use is one which has been deemed to serve the general welfare, correct?
That is correct, if we prove the site is particularly suited.
And why is the site particularly suitable for the proposed use?
I'm glad you asked. A large portion of the particular suitability of a chosen location is actually based upon the radio frequency testimony that we heard. As Mr. Stern testified to, Verizon Wireless currently does have coverage in-building coverage deficiencies, as well as capacity gaps. By locating and installation, this subject property at this proposed 121-foot height, Verizon Wireless will be able to ameliorate the coverage deficiencies that they are currently experiencing in this area. So that certainly is the largest part of the particular suitability. Also, the site's particularly suited because this is the best available property from a zoning perspective, we did work within the confines of your wireless ordinance, and ruled out all permitted and conditionally permitted locations. The site is in the B3 Highway Commercial Zone, this is a use that is completely compatible with the subject, use in the subject property, as well as the surrounding B3 uses. This installation will provide coverage to major transportation corridors, 935, as well as 3.2 square miles of non-roadway coverage. In addition to the roadway, we have major traffic generators in terms of the Epic Church and the Fire Academy. Subject property is 2.4 acres, it is fully developed, there's almost not patch of grass on the whole property, so we will be able to locate this installation on an existing disturbed and developed portion of the property, with having no impacts on the current site plan criteria, or the parking, or circulation, or the parking. In addition to working within the wireless ordinance confines, we did explore the use of existing structures, and as Mr. Stern testified, there was no existing structures that would satisfy the coverage objectives Verizon Wireless has here. And also, the site will be particularly suited, because as it was testified to, the tower that is proposed will be designed for co-location, and so many other carriers that were looking for a location in this area will be able to co-locate on this tower. So for those reasons, I do believe the part, the site is particularly suited, and combined with the special reasons of promotion of the general welfare, I do believe you may meet the positive criteria under the CECA analysis.
Okay, second part of it, as John has mentioned in his planner's report, is the applicant's burden to establish satisfaction of the negative criteria, which as relates to wireless communications requires us to prove satisfaction of the four-pronged CECA balancing test, why don't you take us through that?
Certainly. Under the CECA analysis, first, we identify the public interest at stake, second, determine the detrimental effects that ensued from the grant of the variance, third, impose reasonable conditions to help ameliorate the negative impacts, and four, to perform the actual balancing test. Under the, the negative criteria, we have a benign commercial use, this is a use that has no noise, no glare, no odor, no vibration, as Mr. Colasurdo testified to, there is a generator, diesel generator, but that generator will only operate in emergency situations, or will be exercised only when DEP determines that the weather conditions are acceptable to exercise that type of generator. No vibration, no noxious characteristics, there'll be no impact on municipal utilities, no impact on traffic parking. The primary negative impact associated with this use was actually what was presented in the photo simulations, and that's the purpose of why they are prepared. The visibility associated with this is the primary contributor to our negative impact. Under the third step of the CECA analysis, the board can impose reasonable conditions to help ameliorate the negative impacts of the application. Certainly, the board has, sounds like they made the determination that they are interested in some landscaping. We agree, there's certainly nothing we can do to mitigate the tower itself, but we will certainly agree to planting some shrubs if the board so wants. And the fourth step of the CECA analysis is where we perform the actual balancing test, we're balancing the promotion of the general welfare against the negative impacts and the ameliorating conditions. And we perform this analysis, the standard isn't whether or not the site is visible, the standard is whether or not the visibility, when balanced against the promotion of the general welfare, does that rise to the level of a substantial detriment? And I certainly believe that when the board looks at these photo simulations, he will find that this installation does not rise to the level of a substantial detriment. And for that reason, I do believe the board can grant the variance without a substantial detriment to the public good.
Couple of final questions for Mr. Crunk.
Yes.
What was interesting to me was the Borough's ordinance lists in its introductory paragraph, nine purposes of the, of the ordinance in terms of what its objectives is as it relates to wireless. I know we went through that, but perhaps going through each of the nine, is it fair to say that in this, this particular application advances almost all of the nine purposes of the ordinance?
Yes, I do believe that this application does advance all nine purposes of the goals and purposes of your wireless telecommunications ordinance, which is unusual considering we're not even permitted under your ordinance this installation. But we did, we do meet the goals and purposes of your ordinance. We have worked them within the confines of your ordinance. We addressed all the permitted locations. We addressed all the conditionally permitted locations, and we addressed all existing structures before moving on to this location.
Last question. The, both John and you have referenced the need for the, I guess it's a front yard setback to Route nine there, which is, I guess, 17 feet measured to the compound. Very briefly, can you just provide some brief testimony under the C2 criteria as to why we should be entitled to that variance rule?
Yes, the front yard setback 50 feet is required. What's interesting to note, the existing setback to the building at the closest location is five feet, six inches. So, and we are proposing 17 feet to the, the compound and 33 feet to the Monopole. So we are not exactly, we're not exacerbating the current setback deviation on the, on the subject property. I actually did have another exhibit here, which was, does fall under.
A11.
I believe, yes. Exhibit A11 is a photograph of the proposed compound location. This was taken the same day as the photos from the, the balloon test. This is a location in the parking lot looking towards west, towards the, yeah, towards Route, towards Route nine. And why I thought this photo was illustrative of our setback deviation, because that actually shows you what our, where our deviation is, and it shows you how the retaining wall is, is along the ramp there. So even when you're driving down the 935 ramp, basically, even though we're closer to the right of way than we should be, you're actually going to be looking right over this compound. So I really don't think anybody is even going to know that we have created a, a deviation in the front yard setback requirement for this location.
Your professional opinion, Mr. Krunk, we've met the statutory criteria under C2 as the purposes of zoning substantially outweigh the detriment, correct?
Certainly do, under the flexible C2 variance, yes.
Nothing further. Okay. Any questions from board members on planner's testimony? Anything on from the professionals?
I have, I have no issue with the, the planning testimony that was given. I think it hit all the marks. I do just want to touch on the question of landscaping that was raised. The, um, under 99% of circumstances, I would be incredibly pro landscaping in all of its forms. The, the issue I just want to raise here is that the only green space we've really got is in that, the, the exhibit that's going around is pretty illustrative. You've got the, the, the retaining wall section that is associated with the ramp. And you've got the wall of the motel, and that's really the only strip of grass that's present, at least in this part of the property, if not the entire property. And a good portion of that is actually within the DOT right-of-way. The, the distance between the motel and the, the DOT property line, I'm looking, I pulled the survey out to, to check. Doesn't leave a lot of space to put any landscaping within the existing green area. And even if there was some, I'd be concerned about maintenance access to it with the, with the tower compound. So on, like I said, 99.9% of the time, I would be gung ho about adding landscaping. I just don't know if it's practical here, and I just wanted to raise that so they don't get into a issue where a condition is put on an application that can't be adhered to.
Oh, with that advice, we will not require landscaping. Any board members have any issues with that?
I may have to agree. I'm looking at a Google picture of it, and it looks like it's really not a big retaining wall. It's like it comes down and covers most of it. What, what would that be? Need of grass? There's a telephone pole over there too.
Okay. Right, so then we won't require the landscaping. Okay.
Jim, I have no other witnesses.
Okay. Any, any other comments from board members or professionals? If not, I'm going to open it to the public. Anybody in the public wish to comment on this application? Not seeing anybody. I'm going to close the public portion. You want to sum up?
You at the late hour, I'll dispense with the normal closing statement other than to ask you to approve the application as submitted. It sounds like the board has come to a conclusion that with respect to conditions, no additional conditions other than what we have stipulated this evening that we will reduce the height to 120. I would reaffirm our commitment. And by the way, there is a submission that we make available, the tower at prevailing market rates to our, anybody who else wants to use the tower. That is something that we did submit as part of the application so that you have the assurance that if and hopefully when you approve the application, it will be available for our competitors to be able to use. And we've made that commitment and submitted it in a notarized form. I would otherwise urge you to approve the application. We do think that it meets all of the statutory criteria, the focus being on the particular suitability and the consistency with the purposes of your ordinance.
Okay. We are not a full board tonight. We are missing one member. This is a use variance. So is it okay if we vote? That's your option.
I appreciate your advice, and we understand there are six, and we're prepared to move forward.
Okay. With that, can I have a motion on this application? Motion's been made and seconded. Roll cover. Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you for staying late.
Okay, thank you. Okay. All right. Joan, do, Joan, do they keep the exhibits? Do we keep them? You can keep them. There's some, these are more. Okay, just as a formality, is there anyone in attendance that wants to make any comments to the board that doesn't involve an application? Seeing no one looking to make a comment, I'm going to close that portion of the meeting. We don't have any memorialization to approve. We do have minutes from last meeting. I have a recommend, a motion on the minutes of last, from last meeting. Motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor to approve the minutes. Anybody opposed? Minutes have been approved. Any other business from board members or the professionals? No? Thank you for all staying late. We got these out of the way. Joan, I think we have a pretty full schedule for July, right? So that's why it was important to get them out of the way tonight. And appreciate you staying late. And can I have a motion to adjourn? Okay, we are adjourned. Everyone have a nice Fourth of July weekend. Okay.